Good evening, I'd like to open the eighth meeting fiscal year 2019 of the Milton Planning Board. I'm Cheryl Taggaias, the Chair. Let me go left this time. Brian?
Brian Furze, member.
William Clark, Planning Director.
Lauren Masser, Assistant Town Planner.
April Anderson-Limerow, Secretary.
We have on the agenda tonight a couple of administrative items, citizens speak, a couple of old business items, and one public hearing for a site plan approval, and one public hearing for a special permit. So we have one member who will be here in a couple of minutes, so first I'm going to see if there's anyone here who would like to address us for citizen speak. Okay, I see none. Back to administrative items. We have approval of minutes on the agenda. I'd like to defer that until our next meeting, which is on November 1st. There is an administrative item that I think we can take care of. The Board of Selectmen have established a traffic mitigation committee, and the composition of that committee includes the Chair of the Planning Board or the Chairs designee. I've asked Brian if he would be interested in being our permanent designee, which he has graciously accepted, so if you have no objection, April, since you're the only one here?
No objection.
Thank you, Brian.
Then the Board of Selectmen will get Brian's name, and then they will appoint you. And then you'll get to get sworn in.
Lucky.
Okay, so that is something that they're anxious to get started on, so I'm sure you'll be hearing from them soon, Brian.
That'll be good, though.
Okay, so we have our next meeting November 1st and November 8th, and then we also had, I believe, we have one scheduled also for the 29th. We haven't scheduled into December. Normally it would be the 13th and the 27th. I imagine the 27th is not a good time for folks, so...
Typically, we cancel that meeting.
Yeah, so the issue that we have is, we will have the opportunity, potential opportunity for a special town meeting at the end of February, and which time if we were going to have zoning related to East Milton Square, we would have to have language to the Board of Selectmen in December, early December.
Doesn't seem like good timing.
So that, and then we received, as you see, I think you may have got...
Just you.
Just me? Oh, okay. We plan to open the special permit public hearing on the Walcott Woods, the Carberry property, next week, November 1st. And they've outlined some suggested meeting dates because they'd like to be able to line up consultants to be here for specific dates. So we can go through that next week when they're here, but they're looking to plan a site walk also, and they'd like to have one meeting, so next week's be the introductory kind of overview of the land plan, and then perhaps a site walk, and then at the next meeting after that, have it focus on utilities, stormwater, roadway design, and traffic. And then follow, the next meeting would focus on the site plan, architectural and historic preservation, and affordable housing. And then the next meeting focused on construction management, tree preservation, and any other issues. And then another meeting, which of course would be any follow-up on any of the questions and issues that have been raised. So that, in total counting, well, we don't have to count the site walk because that might come into one of the same days as the meeting, but that would be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
I think the idea was that they could get their permit by the end of the year.
So they had suggested two...
Not happening.
Two dates in December, the 13th and the 20th. So the 13th's already on our...
So hold on, can we back up for a second? Town meeting, February town meeting, what are they thinking about for timing?
You mean timing, end of February?
So the week after the vacation week?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I won't be at that town meeting again.
I won't either.
Because I'll be in Hawaii. So I think that's a, I mean, I would give the Selectmen some feedback that doing it the week of vacation, the week before vacation, or the week after vacation is a bad idea because people go away all three of those weeks. So they really ought to push it to March because going away in February, people go away all of February. That's my input for the Selectmen. And by the way, I don't see us being able to get through Falcone with three or four meetings left before the end of the year.
Well, the Board of Selectmen have a number of items they're considering, including, I think, the fire stations. Do you recall what else, Bill?
I know the rink is on there.
So I don't know if they're...
Fire stations? What are they going to have ready on the fire stations?
For the...
Money for design?
The money for the design.
There are a few items. I've forgotten exactly what they all are, but I'm not, they had suggested earlier in February. I told them there would be no way that we would have zoning done in November, so...
They're going to have it done in December.
Yes, I don't know.
They don't even have anything yet.
Well, we have on the 8th is when we're going to have the traffic analysis, peer review traffic analysis presented to us. So I'm just saying, we have, if we don't have the 13th, then we will probably go, I'm suggesting it's probably not going to be on the 3rd either.
I'm fine with the 3rd.
So if we go a month then without a meeting...
I'm fine with the 13th.
December 13th?
Yeah, the 13th works fine for me.
Yeah, me too.
But what I'm saying is, if we do only the 13th, should we do the 3rd, or we would jump into the 10th and 24th? The ULI tap is the 10th? So I'm hearing from the two of you that only one meeting in December?
You're hearing from me that I don't think we should have town meeting in February is what you're hearing from me. Because if we have to weigh in, I know, and I can go to citizen speak for the Selectmen if you'd like, but I don't see us being ready for Falcone at the end of December. And if we have to weigh in on any of the other things they're considering, that's going to be a problem as well.
Do, I don't think the other things would come to us before, in other words, a planning board hearing is not required for any of the other items that the Board of Selectmen's considering for that town meeting, right?
No.
Right. So it would just be whether we bring anything forward. I think we might want to consider bringing forward an amendment to the traffic bylaw that was just passed to add commercial and multifamily to it.
Yep.
So we can get that done right away and not let it lag so that something comes in in between.
Yep.
So that's, I think it's an easy thing. Hi, Danny.
It's an easy thing. I agree with that.
Hi, Danny, we're just talking about meeting dates, and we know our November dates, but we're looking at December. And we have the 13th would be the typical second Thursday of the month, and then we start getting to the week of Christmas, which is not going to be a good week, right? And then the week of New Year's. So we would be going, if we do the 13th, and then we would be going until January 10th, and we're just talking about if that is a long span in between for any pending projects or any pending zoning.
So I mean, I can meet the 27th, but I don't think we can have anything controversial at that meeting because a lot of people will be out of town, and we'll hear that we had a public meeting when we weren't, when people were away.
I'm not inclined to meet on the 27th.
I'm not going to be in town. But I mean, both of us are in New York that whole first week in December.
I can't do anything else before Christmas.
The 13th.
We've had four meetings, we've had five meetings this month. I can't book up December, too. There's too many events and everything else. I'll be in New York the whole first week.
Are we meeting four times in November?
Plus two town meetings.
Yeah.
No, November, I mean, October, this is the only meeting other than town meeting, right?
Right.
Could be canceled, the meeting on the 11th.
Oh, we're meeting three times.
Three times in November, right.
Meeting three times in November.
And I'm fine with meeting on the 3rd, too. I don't have a problem with the 3rd.
The 3rd of January.
But I don't necessarily know if I want to do three meetings in January. I don't, I guess I'm okay with it if you're trying, but at that point, we've already missed the submission time for February town meeting anyway, right?
We'll have to talk to the Board of Selectmen, but...
So we're not doing the 6th and the 20th, but we are doing the 13th of December.
Of December.
Thank you.
Yes, so we'll definitely do the 13th. Did you have something you wanted to add to that? Okay.
Is the primary point of the meeting in February Falcone?
No.
Okay, great.
It was, that was one of a number of items that was going to lead the Board of Select, the Select Board, to decide whether to have a meeting or not. So I think they have enough other things, enough...
Maybe other things won't wait until May?
If you want to do them in May, you have to turn in your request in December, end of December, beginning of January.
From May?
Yep.
From May?
Why?
It's insane. They have to be in that much, much longer.
For the February meeting, we would need the articles for the Select.
They close the warrant.
No, they said they could do the first week of December for it, but...
They close the warrant the first week in January for May.
Doesn't make sense.
What's the deadline for May? Again, what's the... What'd you say, November?
January.
January?
This week in January is May.
First week in January is May.
So if we have a town meeting on February 25th or 26th, I'm out of town.
I won't be there either. So if the Selectmen, I mean, I'm happy to call the Chair or show up at the next Select meeting and speak at citizen speak, but if two of the five Planning Board members can't make it and they're presenting Falcone, that doesn't seem like a, it doesn't seem like a very good a day. And it's the week after vacation, which a lot of people travel for.
Yes, do you recall, Bill, was that the date? Am I having it correct? I'll look and see my email.
25th and 26th, that's correct.
Yeah, that's a bad idea. People, they're going to be away. And we found out what happens when you don't have a quorum the other day, so...
All right, well, so the question really is, then, you know, even getting something for the May town meeting.
Yeah, it sounds that way.
So...
That warrant date sounds awfully early.
Aggressive.
I don't think we've ever done it before, February before.
Well, they, I know the budget articles are asked to be to the Warrant Committee in December, and the reason they ask for things is that they have to schedule a lot of meetings. Was that why the articles were...
That makes sense to me, but the, I mean, the money ones, but the text, I don't know why that would need to be...
Well, we can talk to them about it. This is something that comes up all the time, that we end up, you know...
And then we get yelled at for being late.
We always end up being rushed.
But we just finished town meeting. How are we possible, and it's now the holidays, it doesn't make any sense to me.
So we could do a January 3rd if there's no other date in December that works for folks.
Just 3.
Well, if we're going to try and get, buy a little more time for the, I think that allows us, if it's early January, that they have to have it. If we schedule an extra meeting in January, that would give us time, more time in January to work on an article, right?
I wanted to do a tree bylaw. I don't know if I can in that time.
For May or for February?
For May.
Well, May you'll have a little more time.
That's what I'm saying, if we schedule three meetings in January, that would, you know...
All right, so we're going to have, hold the 3rd as a placeholder at least?
Yeah.
I'd say let's hold the 3rd.
And the ULI is on the 10th.
Is there presentation our whole meeting, or are we going to actually conduct business that night?
The presentation will be at 6 o'clock.
Oh.
Which night is that? The 10th?
January 10th.
These 6 o'clock meetings kill me.
I know, me too.
Let's try not to do any more 6 o'clock, because the traffic is nightmareish.
I just can't get here.
That's actually an all-day deal, and they will get that in, and they like to get it in before your meeting. So they're going to start at 8:00 in the morning. They'll be here all day. They'll write their report over their dinner. They'll present it sometime between 6:00 and 6:30.
Now, are we supposed to be at a coffee or something with them that morning?
Eight.
8:00?
We'll have more after we meet with the two co-chairs.
Who's co-chairing? Do you know?
I do.
Jim Hepburn and Michael.
Yeah, Michael's on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so for January, the 3rd, the 10th, and the 24th. That brings us to the public hearing, 4333 Brushhill Road.
Hello?
Hi. Last time 333 was here, the Board voted to have Mr. Peron deck, I'm going to miss the right word, cancel the site plan approval.
Rescind?
Rescind.
Rescind?
Thank you. Rescind the site plan approval. Since then, there have been issues with the special permit and the site plan. One of the issues came that the developer changed lawyers, and they were told they had to go to land court. They went to land court, they came up with a joint decision, and at that point, I'm going to start talking, and I'll give it to Chris, who can give you the...
Thank you, Bill. I'm happy to bring the Board up to speed. For those of us that haven't met, my name's Christopher Agostino. I'm counsel for Brushhill Mansions LLC, which is the developer. I'm a new face on the development team. I was engaged in April of this year to try to solve a problem, and clearly, this development ran into a lot of problems. And my job was to identify those problems and propose solutions. And I know there are a lot of audience, or members in the audience tonight that have had to deal with this project for quite a while, and I can assure you that since I've been involved, there have been a lot of individuals that have been working very hard to try to work through the problems that have been associated with this development and come up with, planned forward to get the site planted and constructed properly so that those problems are resolved. So I'm going to give just a very brief procedural recitation of how we got to this point, but ultimately, we're here to try to settle the litigation. And Town Council is here today, and he actually has three cardinal rules for any settlement discussions regarding litigation. And number one is, we shouldn't be discussing the relative strengths and weaknesses of our litigation positions. Number two is that we shouldn't have any negative comments or bad comments about any of the parties involved, and I think that's an important one, just given the timeline or the length of time that there's been a dispute about this. I know that there were a lot of difficult feelings and personalities and conflicts, and I think, you know, if we try to avoid any negative statements about anybody, that would be helpful. And the last one is that we'll try to avoid snarky comments as well, you know, from anyone that's going to comment on our proposal and, you know, our plan forward, so...
Christopher Agostino, may I excuse me for one moment? I just want to clarify that we're here actually for an amendment, the site plan, to the site plan approval. We're not really here to discuss the settlement in any way, right? We're here because you're coming back for an approval from us.
So I can, I'll elaborate on that, but we're before the Board on an application to amend the existing site plan that Brushhill Mansions LLC has and that they appealed to the land court. We submitted the amendment to the Board for its review in anticipation that if the Board accepts the amendment and our plan, that that will settle the litigation before the land court. So the litigation before the land court is that this Board rendered an order relative to Brushhill's site plan approval, okay? And we appealed that order to the land court. We did not feel as though that order was appropriate. We don't have to get into the details, but that was appealed. So that order never became final, in essence. It's in litigation. So in order to settle our grievances about that order, at the suggestion of Town Council, the Town Planner, and at a meeting, we felt the path of least resistance and the easiest thing to do would be to submit an amendment for the Board's consideration as a proposed settlement. So the amendment is for settlement purposes. If, for whatever reason, we can't get to yes, then the situation remains in litigation.
I see, okay.
But I can kind of bring us up to speed as to how we got there, because I think it's always helpful to kind of recite the timeline. And I'm not going to go back all the way to 1982 when this condominium conversion special permit was originally issued, but what I will start with is that in 2014 or thereabouts, the condominium, Mansions at Brushhill Condominium, applied for condominium, applied for an amendment to its special permit. And the amendment was to allow for this three condo unit addition to its development under its special permit, okay? The condominium sold the development rights to my client Brushhill Mansions, who then applied for site plan approval with respect to just the five acres at the down gradient portion of the condominium site, all right? That site plan approval that everyone, I think, is familiar with the plan for the development of those three condo units was issued in October of 2015. The developer immediately undertook to develop the site, and things went south from there, okay? I don't have to get into details, but in or about 2017, the condominium applied to this Board asking that our site plan approval be revoked, okay? Based on allegations that the site plan was not being implemented properly, it was not being constructed properly as far as the drainage, that there were problems with the drainage installation, and that too many trees were cut, okay? Ultimately, this Board determined to issue an order for the developer to do certain things, and failing those things, the site plan approval would be revoked, okay? That is the appeal that's before the land court, is that order to, for the developer to do certain things.
She's one more minute. You also realized that the developer chose not to attend our meetings during that time period, right?
I spent many hours reviewing tapes and researching the history of this property back to the 1980s, and the history of the permits, and all the correspondence, videotape, the whole nine yards. It was described by one town official as a land use permitting nightmare, and I can assure you, it has kept me up at nights, okay? So whatever's happened in the past, everyone is working in good faith, including my client, to get this done, okay? So hopefully, we can move forward from there and not assign, you know, any ill will towards what has happened in the past, okay? Because I can assure you, my client's working in good faith and is committed to undertaking substantial efforts to get this done.
The reason I mention that is just, again, for history, is that this Board really did try to work with the developer and the association to come to some kind of agreement that wouldn't have led us to the path that you described, so I just want to make sure that people understand that.
Sure. So in the context of our appeal to the land court, obviously, as you know, there was also litigation between the condo and the developer and the Superior Court, but it was determined that the developer and the condo should go sort it out, okay? So that's what we did. The developer and the condo got together, and we had two full days of mediation along with countless hours of discussions, phone calls, planning, reviews to quote-unquote "sort it out." And as David says, at this point, everybody's playing nice in the sandbox as far as the condo and the developer are concerned. And the condo and the developer have settled their differences with respect to the development of this site, the land court litigation, and the Superior Court litigation, subject to this Board's subscription to that settlement, okay? And so what had happened was, we reported the settlement to Town Council and the Town Planner, and it was decided that the best thing to do would be to apply, for the developer to apply for an amendment to its site plan approval that incorporates the things, the work that was agreed to between the condo and the developer to finish the project. Because remember, it was the condo that initially applied to the Board for revocation of the site plan approval.
Just may I mention one other thing?
Sure.
We also heard from downslope abutters of this property at the same time, so it wasn't just the association, and we're concerned both for what you've described...
Absolutely.
...but also for the downslope.
Absolutely, and again, I can assure all of you that that was central to the settlement, was making sure that the stormwater management system ultimately performs as it was originally designed to perform, okay? So that was part of the settlement. So the settlement that we are presenting to the Board includes the plan for the developer to replant the site, so the landscaping and tree plan, and the plan for the developer to tweak the stormwater management system so that the stormwater management system operates as it was designed, okay? The original October 2015 site plan approval included many of the stormwater management facilities that you see on the plan, but it just didn't work, all right? So I'll get to the details on what we're proposing there, but I think it's appropriate to start with the tree planting, since trees have been a major concern. So our reference point, or at least one of the developers' reference points with regard to tree planting, was BSC's December 2017 report that tried to analyze how many trees were cut on-site in excess of those that were to be cut. Now, in reviewing everything, it's a quagmire as far as trees, but what was originally proposed on the developer's planting plan was to plant 95 trees, a mixture of evergreen, deciduous. The species were all identified on a planting plan that was circulated to the town. The condo alleged that was insufficient, okay, at 95 trees. So the condos...
Which pla, I'm sorry, which plan is that? The original plan?
There was an MKA plan from November of 2016, that there was no planting plan that was approved with the site plan approval.
Correct, okay, so this is, I know which plan you're talking about.
Okay, so the condo hired an arborist, and the developer hired an arborist. And the two arborists got together on-site and walked the site on more than one occasion to determine what would be the proper number of trees to replant on the site and at what locations those trees should be planted. Because one of the allegations about the MKA plan is that it called for certain trees to be maintained that were removed, all right? So the BSC plan, or the BSC review identified approximately 30 trees that were cut in excess of what was supposed to be cut. The developer and the condo... Sorry, is there a question?
Yeah, so there's 30 within the site, but on the perimeter.
30 to 50 total, okay? But in that analysis, it was not the exact number of trees, it wasn't, the 20 was an estimate of the cut beyond the limit of work boundary, okay? So that was an estimate based on square footage. So the number I'm looking at is the actual trees, what they did was, they did an overlay of the trees that existed on-site and then the trees that continue to exist, and that number was 30. In any event, the two arborists got together, walked the site, and the developer and the condo agreed that an additional 40 trees would be planted, and we've identified the species. So a total of 135 new trees are going to be planted pursuant to our settlement plan. Now, the exact location of those trees is not identified on the settlement plan, and the reason for that is that there are a lot of underground utilities, underground infrastructure, drainage, and there's also additional grading that needs to be done in order to finish the site.
Are you, excuse me again, are you referring to this plan?
Yes, that is, that is what I will refer to as the tree planting settlement plan.
And are these the new trees in color?
Those are a schematic identification of the location, so you'll see that there are notes on there that refer to a number of trees. So those are not the, so if you look at one tree, there's a note that says 6, or if you look at another tree, there's a note that says 4. So those trees are not the actual trees.
But it's the highlight, what I'm trying to understand is, in the report, the BSC report, where the limits of work were expanded to the downslope side, are you proposing new trees in that area?
So if you look, you can see that there are additional trees that were... that were proposed in some of those areas. But the final location, that was intended to be a schematic. So just to give you a sort of higher level view of it, we did not know what the town was going to require of the condo and the developer. So when the condo and the developer settled on our plan, the way it was agreed to be implemented was through construction monitoring. Right? We were going to have intensive construction monitoring to make sure that whatever was proposed was finally implemented in the field to satisfy the goal. All right? When we went back to the town, the town said, "We want detail on the plan." All right? When we settled it, the idea was construction monitoring. You can show as much detail on the plan as you want, but if it's not executed in the field, it doesn't matter. So our idea was that we would have construction monitoring so it's actually executed in the field, which is why that's a schematic plan. That's not intended to show the final location of the trees, and we do not intend to provide a revised, complete landscaping plan showing the identification of the exact location because it is invariably going to move. However, the number is there, and with construction monitoring, we feel as though we can implement. And I think David has a few things to speak to in that regard.
Before we get to that, David? Excuse me. Did you speak to the Down Slope Abutters about this plan?
So I had sent one letter a while back, months ago, just inquiry. And I only sent it to one abutter that I saw on a videotape that I thought might have been a good liaison to maybe discuss with neighbors.
I think we made it pretty clear through staff and through council that this was an important issue that was going, we'd want to discuss tonight. So we're, since you haven't heard from them, we're going to ask to hear from the neighbors, if they're here, to see what their thoughts are about not identifying any trees in the area that was basically clear cut beyond what was approved in that site plan approval. Because I think that's one of the things that we really are concerned about. We're happy that you, your parties are coming to an agreement and want to move forward. We're very happy about that. But we also want to make sure that the abutters are, who suffered a lot of damage through the conflict and the lack of progress between the party, your parties. You know, they were not party to your disagreements and not party to your settlement. We need to make sure they're taken care of as well.
Absolutely. Two quick comments. The trees that are proposed were proposed with an eye towards creating a buffer to the neighbors. That was absolutely taken into account. Both parties had arborists on-site that were reviewing the creation of a buffer. Okay? The other element of it is that you can overplant a site. So the number 40, in addition to the 95, for a total of 135 trees, was also dictated in part by, you don't want to overplant the site. So that's how we came up with that 135 tree number. So it does provide for a buffer. We can, and David, you know, might want to give a little more detail, but you can see on the schematic, and again, it's a schematic, but it calls out where the buffer will be created relative to certain areas of the site that lost some trees for a buffer.
Okay. So again, David, just one more question before you start. Do the arborists issue any kind of memo or recommendation in writing?
There are several that we have that describe those dynamics. Yeah. The dynamics of how they got to it. So yes, there is a written description of the trees that would be planted and the methods that would be employed to plant the trees.
Okay, David, you, I'll have you go forward.
No. That's just the schematic plan regarding location, but there is another memo that describes the number, the trees.
Okay.
So my name's David Udi. I'm counsel for the condominium trust at Mansions at Brushhill. Just to add a couple of points to that, to the extent it's helpful to the board. If you look at basically what this plan that we submitted to you is, is the MKA plan with new trees, additional trees on it.
Is it this one?
Yes. So if you look at the way the plan is set up, when you see a circle with a plus in it, that is a new tree to go in. So if you look behind the newly proposed units, there are a significant number of trees that are going to be going into that location.
But, I'm sorry, may I interrupt you one?
Of course.
Were these the ones that were on the plan before it was realized that there was additional clear cutting on the boundary?
So when, my understanding is, when my client's arborist went to look at the conditions on-site, vis-a-vis what was being represented on this MKA plan, that the only discrepancies that he found were there were five trees that appeared to look like they were supposed to remain. Like, if you see a circle with a dot in it, that's an existing tree that was supposed to remain, that were no longer there. And then there were two trees that were still there, but dead. So these trees behind the units are all additional trees that the developer originally reported to the planning board that it would plant.
So if I may?
Yeah.
This plan is still using the, not to go beyond line, that was on the approved plan, not the as-built condition that was much closer to the property line. This red area, right? So you're showing trees. If I'm looking at the landscape plan, this one, right?
Yeah.
And that's the same as up here. All of that red is area that was cut that wasn't supposed to be cut. Right? So what I'm asking is, have you planned to put trees in the area that was clear cut without approval?
So if you look at the MKA plan, the trees are...
Do you have that here, Bill? I know we have it here, but just for people in the audience.
No. These ones.
So just, again, the methodology that the developer and the condo used with an eye towards also satisfying the concerns of, primarily satisfying the concerns of Down Gradient Abutters. Because the condo is in it as well. Okay? If Down Gradient Abutters are, continue to be affected by this, this will never end. Okay? So we did this with an eye towards satisfying everyone. And the schematic shows trees being planted along a limit of work. Okay? There is an extended limit of work, as you've described, and the intent is for the trees that you see on this MKA plan to be finally located along where the outer limit of work is provided for. So if it's moved on the BSC plan, the trees that you see on this MKA plan will follow the limit of work. And to the extent the arborists, you know, decide that spacing should be modified to make sure the trees remain healthy and that they grow properly, they will confirm that in the field. But the goal is buffer, to plant it as a buffer.
Well, first, for me, I think we're going to need, I would like to see a commitment in the drawings and in writing of what would happen in this zone that we don't see on the plan now. I don't think it's acceptable to say that it'll be purely handled in the field. That's my opinion. I'll see what the rest of them, board members, think about that.
I also think replacing 30 trees with 40 trees, you're taking out big trees or medium-sized trees, and you're replacing them with 2-inch caliber trees. So you need to have more trees. It's generally a three to one, or at least a two to one. So, and that's, that's if you're replacing 30 trees. I had read numbers from the independent peer reviewer of 50. So replacing 50 trees with 40 trees is even more concerning. But if, if we could add trees, in other words, this plan is fine, but add trees.
I'm not sure, I mean, what you say in terms of how many. I think the arborist's point of view in terms of how many should go in that particular area is a valid point. I would suggest that the opinion of the arborist might be sought for this. But we would like to have a commitment that it's going to be replanted in areas that were done, or the scope of work or the limits of construction was expanded. Because that's what's the part that's closest to the direct abutters, right?
And my point is that I think the MKA plan that you have in front of you depicts that. What I would suggest is that rather than introducing a new plan, that the board order a statement to the effect that the buffer trees shown on the MKA plan be located along the limit of work so as to create a buffer. Because if we go and produce another plan, then the process continues. And I think as far as trying to settle litigation where we have a functional plan and the town is going to have a construction monitor that we are going to fund, and that's a critical element of the settlement, there are actually going to be two construction monitors. It's unfortunate that there wasn't one in the original permit, but we are where we are. But there are going to be a construction monitor for the condo, and there's going to be a construction monitor for the town. And I'm sure Mr. Clark is going to be walking around as well. And they're going to stake out the final location. So rather showing it on a plan that when you get in the field, it might ultimately move, if we can elaborate on the concept that a buffer will be created with the trees that are identified, then that will accomplish the goal. And rather than having an argument about the plan later on that a tree needs to be moved or it has to be moved in the field, the idea is, let's rely on the construction monitors to some degree. And I think that has a lot of value to it. You can put as much detail in the world, as much detail in the world on a plan and not have it implementable if the site conditions don't allow for it. So rather than have a situation where we have to come back before the board for an amendment to the plan, if we articulate the goal, which is to create a buffer with the number of trees that the arborist identified as an appropriate and a healthy number of trees. And again, the replacement concept, the BSC report did not identify caliper. And also, the replacement concept is oftentimes used as a valuation concept, where you're trying to value a tree. You replace a 30-inch caliper or a 30-inch DBH tree with a certain number of smaller trees. But for purposes of planting the site, the idea is create a buffer.
Understood. And... Go ahead, yes.
Okay. So when you clear cut wooded area, you need a diversity of, you know, let's say 30% large, 30% medium, and then understory, shrubs or what have you. To be, I'm sure you've talked about this. So, anyway, I just want to...
No. In addition to the 135 trees, there are, I mean, how many?
Diversity. There are diversity here.
Yes. And that was, the two arborists got together...
It doesn't matter that he didn't measure the caliper before. We know it's been clear cut. We know, we know there was wooded area. We know it's been...
Here's the thing. And I want to be delicate about this because I want to adhere to town council's rule. We're not going to argue the relative merits of our case. Okay? The problem is, we have a site that needs to be planted. All right? The solution that's being proposed is that we've identified 135 trees of various species to be planted. Two arborists have agreed that that is sufficient and healthy to plant and create a buffer. And again, when the discussion was had, it was had with an eye towards creating a buffer for the abutters. And a buffer for the condo owner as well in one instance, that we're going to take care of. But these issues...
Mr. Argostino, you've repeated this idea about the buffer a number of times. I'm an architect. We put things on paper before we build them, and we expect contractors to follow what we put on paper. So having a drawing which shows where things are going to go in a general area and say there will be a minimum number of trees in that zone is what we're looking for, and we need it on a piece of paper. It can't just be a description, and we're going to leave it to the contractor. That's what got us in this mess, to start with, in part.
That, I would disagree. That's not what got us in the mess. Lack of construction monitoring. Okay? The original plan, all right, provided for the site to be built in a certain way. Okay? In this instance, we have construction monitoring. As an architect, you do on-site meetings weekly, and if you see something that's incorrect, it's not to spec, or if it doesn't meet the specifications or the, what's the word in construction? The contracts are complimentary. You know, one required by one's required by all. There are things that are implied in a contract or implied in the specifications. Okay? If you don't feel as though that plan is sufficient, and if the board doesn't feel as though it's sufficient, I guess it's the board's whim to say that we have to go create a plan showing the location of the trees. Okay?
I don't think it's a whim. I think it's a right, and I think it's an obligation. Because our responsibilities extend beyond the two parties that are trying to work this out. I understand that. But we are also bound to be concerned about the project overall. And I would like to hear from the Down Slope Abutters about how comfortable they would be for us approving something that's described as, "Don't worry, we'll take care of it in the field," basically, "trust us." That's what you're asking us to do, and that's not something that we typically do. We typically ask for things to be very clear on paper in advance.
We're not asking for that.
Can I suggest a solution? Because I hear what the board's saying, it makes sense. So the town has had a peer review engineer involved in this process, who authored the report that you just kindly let me look at. He's also, we're also trying to make sure that he is on board and content with what we're doing with the drainage. Because I think the things that are being done with drainage are also going to help the down slope abutters. So would it make sense for us to come up with a revised plan, or a plan that goes through him as the kind of lens through which the board, I mean, obviously, the board's going to look at the plan. But should we be working with him on putting together a plan that shows, particularly in that area behind the units, what we intend to do there?
Well, the-
Would that be helpful?
I'd like to hear from, you know, your engineer and the peer review engineer. I know they've done a lot of work, and they've been working well together about that. But my understanding is that Mr. Crispin's not an arborist or a landscape architect. And we really would like to hear from the arborist about the right number of trees in this area. And I think Denny's point about the mix of scale of those trees is important. So unless you have a different viewpoint on the tree, April, or Brian, or Denny, I think we could discuss the stormwater next.
Who do you guys like?
And then we'll hear from anyone in the audience who would like to hear from us.
Just so we know how to solve the problem, to your satisfaction. What do you suggest that we do with trees? What, like, what is the board's thinking on what we can do to answer that question, so that you feel satisfied?
From my point of view, you could take this plan, and you could mark in these areas, which are relative, related to the red areas here, and have the arborist note, you know, what the mix would be of different sized trees in those areas, with a range of the number of trees. And then, the balance of where else they go on the site, I'm not as concerned about. As long as you folks are happy with where they go the rest of the site, I think I'm just would like to see on the directive-
That's the critical area, okay, then we'll work on that.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think the fact, you've been very specific to appoint interior to the site. But all of the issue that has come before this board has been around the perimeter. And I know what you're trying to do, and I understand everything you're saying about needing to understand where there's futility lines, and all of the other impacts you could encounter. Understanding where that limit is on this plan would be really helpful. Because I don't think, right now, we understand that these trees are on that line, or 20 feet, or 50 feet from that line. So that would be very helpful to, I think, giving us comfort after a very complicated situation, that this is going to get done to the satisfaction of all of the people in this room.
As far as process, part of the concern is that we are under an order from the land court to mediate this dispute, okay? We submitted an application to this board in an effort to essentially have that mediation in a public forum, all right? It would help to move the process along if the board were to appoint one person as a liaison to help guide that plan, so that we're not in a position where we come back with a plan, and no one on the board has seen it, and they have major concerns with it, right? So is that something that could be considered, where maybe someone would volunteer their time, and understanding you're all volunteers, and you have other commitments, to maybe take a look at an interim plan, and say whether or not it's satisfactory to alleviate those concerns about the precise location? And then I would also ask that, to the extent the construction monitor orders any changes in the field, as long as it's documented by the construction monitor as to the rationale for those changes, that we do not have to have a public hearing to come back before the board to move a tree.
Yeah, I think we can handle that with a note, we can handle that with a note to the plan, last piece.
And I think what you suggested, we do have another meeting next week. This planning board has several meetings in November. So it gives you an opportunity to come back to us fairly quickly with an updated plan, and the memo, or I think a memo. You said the memo exists. I'm not asking for anything to be recreated, but the work that the arborist has already done, an update to this. And I think if you get that to us next week, I don't think it has to be much more than that, unless anybody else here would like more than that.
Critical area, then, is that red area in Mr. Crispin's report that you want to see specificity in with species and caliber size, is that-
And a range of numbers, you know,
And a range of numbers.
And appreciate the fact that it, there should be some flexibility in the number, but at least we want a minimum scope of work on it.
Well, there's actually no flexibility in the number. We're committed to 135 trees, wherever they are.
Yeah, but I mean, in that zone. In other words, the rest of them, you're going to have other places to work out on site, which is fine, and how you folks decide to work them out is fine, too. But we would like a certain number of those, as recommended by the arborist, to address the fact that that was clear cut beyond what was approved. That's the part we're focused on, okay?
Yeah, that sounds good, okay.
Yes.
Go ahead, yes.
I read the very small thing, so that was from a while ago. That was before my time, anyway. So I read the small, it seemed like they were talking about, you need to find out where the water, a water source is, you need to have, anyway, I would like to go a step further. Not only knowing where the water source is, I'd like to see a maintenance plan, like an actual plan of how the water-
We actually have that.
Okay, great.
Yep, that was agreed to with the condo.
For the trees?
Yes. Great.
Over what period of time?
So we have, if memory serves, we have, I don't want to speak out of turn, so I'm not 100% sure on all the details, but the trees come with at least a one-year warranty, a watering plan, and a planting plan. So they're not just going to be planted kind of willy-nilly by, you know, some landscaper with a pickup truck. They're going to be planted in a professional way to ensure that they live. And then there's a watering plan that goes with it, including, I'm probably butchering the name with these giant watering bags that they put down-
Heater bags.
-fill up over time. So the plan is, and the type of soils that are going to be used to plant the tree, the circumference of dirt that they dig out, replaced with proper soils for the trees, they're going to be planted in a professional way, and then the watering plan will be in place thereafter. So that's-
Is one year long enough to know if they take? We usually do three.
With that many trees, one year is not long enough, no. Because you just run, you just run so many arborists. And I noticed there were some, I mean, like you have cherry dogwood, and you have a couple of, a couple that, like the red bud, those trees, they often need special care. I don't even know if the cherry dogwood is native, but that, dogwoods are beautiful.
Well, what I would say, what I would say to that is, obviously, there's an ongoing dispute between the parties. And as part of our mediation, both sides had to resolve things in a specific way. No one got 100% of what they wanted on their wish list. So if there's a tree that's planted, and that whatever warranty period that we agreed to between the developer and my client, if something happens to the tree thereafter, well, then it's part of the common area of the condominium, and it would need to be addressed by my client. So whatever we negotiated with the developer with respect to a warranty period, once the developer has done fulfilling its obligations under whatever agreement we ultimately sign off on, then it becomes the responsibility of the people who live in this community to take care of their own trees.
So we could, you know, if we so chose to, we could request that that warranty period for this buffer zone be increased.
So interestingly-
Not for the rest of it, but just for that zone. Again, the zone that we're most focused on, which is that over-clear-cut zone.
That's been raised tonight. Clearly, there's going to be another hearing. I think I'm going to discuss some of these nuances with David, and Town Council as well, given where we are in this, and given the goals. You know, our goal is to get this done and planted. We're not going to do that in a rush and miss things, but, you know, getting it done is important, because if it, it's a delicate situation. I can't tell you how many hours went in to getting to this point. And I don't want to see us have a lot of hard work undone.
We're not trying to undo, but we also, I think, through Town Council, did express our concern about the tree and the buffer throughout the last several months, so.
So with respect to drainage, you know, clearly-
Sorry, Denny has one other comment?
Another sensitive topic to discuss. But on another project that was similar in a tree issue, we did a diminishing bond, which was if, in this case, it was a three-year, and it, let's say it was $30,000. At the end of the first year, it went down to 20. At the end of the second year, it went down to 10, and then at the end. So if all the trees survived, or were replaced as they went, they, the people owe nothing at the end. They just have a bond out there in case. And that way, nobody has to run back and go through litigation to address the trees.
That is a great idea, but that's not in this case. We have a site plan approval that was granted with certain requirements. And I think this is a relatively newly composed board, or at least a new chair and a new member. And I think there may be a lot of lessons learned from this project, maybe particularly with regard to construction monitoring, which I regularly see as a condition on projects out of the gate. But I think, you know, we're, this is tricky where we are. And we're trying to settle what is a difficult situation. And, you know, we have a methodology to make sure they're planted properly, so that they live. But as far as cash, it's just, it's just not going to work in this instance, so.
So giving us more information, like you have the planting specifications, that would also be useful.
Sure.
Because then it could give us background to, if that wasn't done properly, then, you know, it's in violation, right?
Right, right.
So if we don't have it, then we can't make that comment, reinforce it, right?
And we have two construction monitors to look at.
And just to add to that, just to, the way we've tentatively set up this proposed settlement agreement, that I would see is conditioned upon this board allowing this process to get back on track. Is let's assume the process goes back on track, and drainage and tree replacement work begins. What we would have appended to our agreement is the final drainage plan as approved by this board, and the final tree planting plan approved by this board. Now, because of the past history between our clients, what we've agreed to do, and I think this is a prudent idea, was to appoint a neutral person that our parties will both pay for. And this person could be someone like Mr. Crispin, it could be someone like Sean Riley, who's my client's drainage expert, but both a drainage engineer and an arborist to oversee each of those phases of work. And the developer, in our tentative agreement, has agreed not to accept or apply for occupancy permits until that neutral for each type of work, the drainage and the trees, has approved and signed off on the work as called for in the plans. So not only can the town decide on its own dime to have someone monitoring this, but my thought was, and Chris agreed, and we worked this out, was, let's appoint someone on our collective dime to be there at the critical moments, to be watching this work, to see if the stuff on the piece of paper is actually what's done on site. And in that way, this volunteer board doesn't have to be concerned that things are going to go off the rails again, because the developer's not going to get his occupancy permits unless these neutrals sign off. And they're qualified people, they're not just, you know, random people. They're engineers and arborists.
So just since David's brought that up, I've said there are going to be two levels of construction monitoring, because the town planner's made very clear that the town would want its own monitor. Likely, David Crispin will be employed as a construction monitor. He's currently peer reviewing the plans at the applicant's expense. So just, when we get to the point of defining that scope, we want to make sure that those two construction monitors' efforts dovetail. Because we are spending a lot of money on construction monitoring, and we don't need two people looking at a hole every day. You know, although I'm sure that happens on many sites, but, you know, there are instances where maybe they can work together. But the town has an independent, and the condo has an independent as well. So drainage, again, of primary concern are the down gradient abutters, okay? Everything that has been done, has been done with an eye towards solving the problem of unattenuated runoff impacting down gradient abutters, all right? The plan that you have before you is, shows the evolution of a plan that was agreed to between the condo and the developer. The developer has their engineering team, and the condo actually has their own engineering team. So the developer proposed the plan, the condo's engineer peer reviewed it. The original plan showed concepts. And I'll describe the two problems in the concepts in a second. But the reason the original plan did not include detail, again, was because we, when we settled it, were relying on construction monitoring to make sure that the goals were achieved in the field. The town's peer review expert has said, similar to what the board's chair has described with regard to tree planting, that they want to see details on the plan, okay? So we are currently going through the process of adding detail to make sure that the goals are accomplished, to solve the problems. The two problems with the original stormwater management system was, one, it was not picking up all of the water coming down the site, all right? There was water that was coming down the site, unattenuated at a high rate. It was overtopping the retaining wall, running off past the units, and never touching the stormwater management system, including the cul-de-sac chambers that were on the site, that were installed on the site. Number two, even if that water was going into the system, we discovered that the system had water in it before the storm even hit. So it could not function as intended, all right? The idea of a stormwater management system is to catch the water that's coming overland, store it, and then release it slowly, or store it, and then infiltrate it into the ground. Neither one of those things was happening on this, on this site. In addition to the fact that the site wasn't planted, all right? It was in the middle of construction when a stop work order was issued. You didn't have any grass, as we know, trees were cut in places, so you didn't have any, just natural infiltration. It was just running unattenuated down gradient. So the plan that we came up with, that was peer reviewed by the condo, is intended to catch all the water coming down the site, and to make sure that the system that was originally proposed has the storage capacity that was originally designed for, all right? So we wanted to get the water out of the cul-de-sac system, and catch water that wasn't getting in. So there are two main structures that accomplish that. And then another structure, down gradient, that is sort of the catch-all, all right? So the two structures, and I'll just point them out on the plan.
Do you need a mic?
Yes.
Are generally, this is the tennis court, all right, and the retaining wall. This is the existing underground cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac chambers, and it's basically a cave that is designed to catch water during a storm, and then release it out slowly. But we found that water was just flowing down the site over here, and just running away, out of control. So the first structure we designed was, or the goal is, to create a berm in this location that's going to catch the water as it's coming overland, all right, and direct it towards our chambers over here. It's going to be caught in a little rain garden, we're going to call it, in this location, which is going to slow it down, and then flow through pipes into the cul-de-sac chambers. So that's number one, is catching that water. There are a lot of details that go into accomplishing that goal. The engineers are working through those details. But Mr. Crispin, I believe tonight, can say that the concepts are there. We agree on the concepts, but it's a matter of showing how we're going to accomplish those concepts on the plan. The second issue is getting the water out of the cul-de-sac chambers. We discovered that it's not necessarily a high water table, but it's perched water that's flowing under the surface, along a clay layer, that is essentially just flowing underground down the hill, and is filling up these chambers in some instances. Particularly after a storm, the water gets into the ground, and then is coming through the ground. But bottom line is, as David Crispin described, the bathtub is full before you turn the water on, all right? So we want to get the water out of the bathtub, and to do that, the concept is to create what is, in essence, a French drain at or below the bottom of the leaching chambers that is going to catch that perched water as it comes underground. Instead of going into the cul-de-sac chambers, we're going to redirect it down gradient, so that it's removed from the chambers, all right? That's the concept. The other concept, or the other, we did more soil testing on site. And the soil testing revealed what, you know, I deal with a lot of developers, this is bad soil in many instances. They would look at this and just say, "It's bad soil, so we need to design for it." But in order to add some sort of extra exfiltration from the system, so the water's getting in, we have to get it out, we're also proposing to excavate and refill this area down gradient of the chambers, right along the chambers, so that when water gets in there, instead of running into a clay layer, it's going to be able to leach out a little bit through this area, all right? And then the last sort of failsafe is, even if the system doesn't have enough storage for a 100-year storm, or it just doesn't have enough storage for whatever reason, we want to make sure, and our major goal was ensuring, that even under the worst circumstances, it wasn't damaging down gradient properties. So rather than just have the water break out or run over the system, now that we've removed the water from the system, we've also proposed to build a berm along the tree line, so we're not cutting down any additional trees. But we're proposing to install a berm that's going to, to the extent any water does get overland, or does overtopp the system, instead of just running unattenuated into the houses down gradient, it's going to be directed towards what is a depression in this area. So away from the houses, and there's also trees in this area, so there's going to be some more infiltration, it's going to slow down the rate, and the goal is that it's not going to damage anything. Ultimately, the concept is to make the original plan that was approved work as it was intended, all right? And to do that, we're proposing these two facilities. And again, the concept, we believe is sound. We believe that the town's peer review engineer, and the condo's peer, the condo's peer review engineer already agrees with the concept. The town's peer review engineer agrees that the concept is sound. But we're, instead of relying on construction monitoring, which was our intent initially, we're going to show the details on the plan, and do some more work through the peer review process to ensure that there's a plan that the construction monitor can then enforce. So that's the goal for the drainage fix.
So Mr. Argostino, may I call Mr. Crispin up to the table now to see his take on what you've described? To request his take.
Good evening. I do think we're in very good agreement on the concepts. In fact, these concepts kind of go back about a year. They've been floating around for a while, they're nothing new to me. The term "construction monitor" to me is not a design builder. And that's, I think, where we keep asking for more detail, you keep asking for detail, so that the construction monitor doesn't turn into the designer. We're not very far off. We really are not very far off. I think this is the best we will ever get here as far as solving the neighborhood's problem, de-watering the existing system. And this, what was called a French drain, I've used this concept on other projects as an interceptor drain for septic systems, where the groundwater's too high for a septic system, so you dig a trench, you fill it with crushed stone, and it literally bleeds out the groundwater in a very slow trickle, constantly, and keeps it low, so the system will be dry at the beginning of the storm.
So can I ask you about that trench drain? Because Mr. Argostino said it would, it would take it so it doesn't get into the cul-de-sac, understood. But then it would be sent down gradient. I just want to understand where down gradient-
The general idea here is, this is a very seven or eight-foot-deep crushed stone trench with perforated pipe in it, with an outlet pipe that would come down to the bottom.
To the berm, so it would be-
To the berm. And this berm is really, it's a swale, and then a berm. So you want the water that's coming down the hill to be directed down and out to the end. Having been in, I don't know if this person's here, but we were, Bill and I were in their backyard one day, and you could see the water coming down. That's what we're trying to get away, so that stays away across the other side. This swale, which is a lovely graphic, doesn't give the construction monitor enough- to stake the grades to, to build that, and that's the type of detail that I would be looking for.
So, may I ask you something here? We talked about this when you came in and did your work, probably nearly a year ago now, about the water coming in here. Do you think that this design is going to divert it away, so it's not going to go down that way anymore?
Yes. Yes, I do.
Okay.
And I think there are several options for that solution. However the final one gets to be, I would rather not do that in the field, I'd rather have that done before we start digging.
Okay. So, the timing for getting the details, is that something that if we are requesting the landscape, could we get both of those, so that we could continue this hearing until next week? I want to hear from the neighbors, but before we do that, but I'm just asking about the timing of the, when we could get the details.
I'm always hesitant to overpromise and underdeliver. So, that being said, I also heard you mention that you have a hearing on the number eight. I would rather give a little extra time to make sure that we get Mr. Crispin the details he's looking for, and be under the gun. So, I, I, and invariably, when you set a deadline on this, things happen, you're unable to meet the deadline, but I think two weeks would be good. And Mr. Crispin has been working well, you know, he was on vacation, he, he came back and he got right to work, and he's doing his best to try to expedite this, you know, given the circumstances. So, I, I'd rather not, if we could avoid it, set an absolute deadline by the plan shall be, you know, received by XYZ date. What I would suggest is, that by the time we have the next hearing, we work to get to a point where Mr. Crispin can come before this board and said, and say, "I have been satisfied," rather than, rather than-
That's a goal.
Yeah. Agreed. And if we rely upon the peer review engineer or the town engineer on the stormwater, you can see, we're happier and more comfortable talking about the tree portions of it ourselves, but we do rely upon it. And if that's what time is necessary for you folks to work together to get the detail, that's fine. We were just trying to address your concern about time at the outset of this discussion. It would be beneficial if we could get a tree, the information about the trees in advance, so that we have a chance to look at that, because-
Well, and also, to my point, if, if the board would be willing to appoint one individual to almost have a work session maybe on those trees, obviously, we're going to hear from Butters, so you'll, you'll hear, you know, some concerns that Butters have about where the trees are located, maybe you can take those, distill them, and then, to the extent, you know, we want to tweak something on a plan, it won't be completely foreign to the board, and there'll be some logic to it.
I, as long as we have a person who's willing to do that, and I believe I just whispered to Denny and asked her if she is, and she's willing to do that, so I'm happy to have her do that.
And you're probably saying, "Shucks, it's her." Happy to ever do it, yeah.
What's your, what's your email address, Drew?
I'm here, I'll write it down, because it's mine.
All right. So, with that, I think I'd like to ask any buddy in the audience who would like to address us on this project or this application to, please come forward. Julie?
Thank you.
Please. Thank you, Bill. Don't forget to give us your name and address.
So, my, my name is Julie Pancham Singh Barakat, and my address is 366 Truman Parkway. And my property directly abuts this project. I, I, I just want to say that I, I can see that you both work very hard, and you've been working very hard to do something positive, and that's appreciated. At the same time, it's like a marriage, you got divorced, and you're coming to an agreement, but you have kids. We in the neighborhood are the children of this whole issue, and we need to be taken care of, and we need to be done, it needs to be done in a manner that is what I call my norms. You set your norms, sir, at the beginning, or the town's norms. Mine's our justice, fairness, and equity. And so, that's what I would like to see, not just for myself, but also for the neighbors. And that whatever happens here is maintained, so that it's not a one-shot fix-it, but folks actually do monitor and make sure that this system does work in the manner that Mr. Crispin hopes it will, and thinks that it's the very best for the water drainage. But I just want to, this is my chance to speak, so let me speak. I want to go back to 1982, because my mom was the owner of that property. My dad had passed, and one day I came home and there was a wall, and she was not informed or knew what was happening to her property, but a fence was built that was very high and encroached on her property, which made her very sad, and made me very sad that there was seemingly nothing I could do to figure out what was happening. Mom has since passed away, and the property is now mine. And several years ago, a few years ago, I started contacting the town of Milton, asking, you know, "What's going on in the back there?" You know, "I, I'm very concerned, I haven't been contacted." I wrote to Bill, and I said, "I'm going to hold the town accountable for any negative impacts on my property, because I don't feel I've been consulted." And over the years, I kept coming and, you know, emailing, and nothing really quite happened, until one day there was a hearing here about something in the 333 properties, and I brought this up. And folks were not aware of that water that had been running down, and you talked about it, and, you know, just flooding us. Can you imagine having a waterfall on your border? Can you imagine having a swamp? Your property suddenly turned into a swamp? Your grandkids, who you take out to ride their bikes on your driveway, can no longer do that, because there's debris from construction? And you're spending your summers cleaning debris every single day? Those were my hours. By the way, I have a doctorate in education, but my last three years, I've been a yard worker, cleaning my yard, day after day. And it's not fair, what has happened to me, and I know you, you don't want negativity, but it's good to know the history. What I want to do is to thank these fine folks here on the planning board, who listened, who understood, and knew that I was coming from the right place. And, you know, wanted to make sure that this situation is taken care of. I think that based on what I have gone through personally, my family, my property, I think that you, it's, it's a small price to pay for you and your agreement, to recognize that there are costs involved in what has happened. Financial costs, forget the other costs. There are financial costs. Over the summer, I, myself, with my own two hands, planted over 70 small trees in my yard along the border, to try and mitigate some of this, because I would like to leave something for my children that's worth leaving, and my grandchildren. So, I want to talk about money, yes, I do. In order to, and I've gotten some estimates from people, fine people, who are in regard to replanting, by the way, if you haven't been to my property, I have what I call my small forest in the back, was a small forest, which abuts the area that we were talking about with these trees that were cut down. Now, you know what's happened to those trees? You should come see them. Their roots are exposed, they're rotted, many of them have fallen down, dead. I, I can't pay to remove those myself, I can't pay to replant trees there. You're talking about what's going to happen at 333, wonderful. What's going to happen over there in, at my property? So, the estimate that I got only for cutting down the rotted trees, or, and removing the fallen trees, looks like $13,500. That's not even replanting. I'm a retired teacher. My driveway, which is rather long, to take that, clean it up, repave it, two quotes, one $18,000, another $20,000, because they have to hire a police officer, because of Truman Parkway, the way it is to put the equipment. That's another cost. To repair my patio, $3,500. These are costs that I will have to personally incur, if my parents don't take care of it. So, I need you to think about this very carefully in your negotiations, and I'm sure that there are others that have similar issues. It's a small, I would say, chance, opportunity, to take care of some of these things that have happened. It's your opportunity. So, with that, I just want to also put out a couple of questions, which perhaps were answered and I didn't quite understand. But I did hear that, in order to plant the trees, that further grading would have to happen, and I'm just curious about that further grading, and how that would impact our property, because grading, to me, is flattening, which I'm concerned about. And the second thing, I think, was, there, there's supposedly a retaining wall that was mentioned. I know for, I have never seen a retaining wall between 333 and my property, so I'd like to know a little bit more about that, because I've been looking at retaining walls all over the place, just getting a sense of, okay, what they look like, what they do, how could this help for future possible, you know, runoff and, and soil erosion? So, just these questions I have.
Okay. So, on the regrading, I didn't hear you say that there was going to be regrading in these areas. Is that true?
There will not be regrading in those areas. The only grading is for the berm-
Here.
-that's down gradient from the cul-de-sac system, and that's not flattening, that's intended to build a swale to catch any water that may reach down to that point.
So-
That's the, well, that's a different one.
This is the swale that's going to stop water from going here. It's going to redirect it from going this way to here.
Are these cul-de-sacs here in place, these smaller ones for the-
Yes, those catch the roof drains and the driveways.
So, the grading that was necessary for those is complete?
No, it's not. That's one of the details that David's asking for.
There is some grading that needs to be done here still.
Right. I thought, I'm sorry, I thought she was asking about grading close to her property line, down gradient? There's no additional grading, there's no additional grading plan down gradient. Only around the houses, to make sure that the, the catch basins receive water properly.
Right. Sorry, Julie, are you here?
Yes.
I'm 366.
You're here, right? Yeah.
This one has to have, it needs to be finish graded. It, it isn't, it's rough graded now. The drains for the houses are not necessarily connected to these yet, a lot of them are just spilling to the ground.
So, speaking of those, before we get to your retaining wall question, we had these catch basins, and a, this is fairly steep going down these driveways, right? So, in a heavy rain, I imagine it's just going to flow right over those catch basins. I saw in the landscape plan, there's some shrubs that are planted here. We did talk about some time ago with Mr., when Mr. Crispin and Mr. Geisler were here, is that would there be any second line of defense, like a rain garden, that could be put in, if you were going to be grading back here? That could help in the, if it is something which is going to flow over those driveways. So, as, Mr. Crispin, did that ever come up in conversation in this latest work between the two parties?
Not that I know of, no. The primary focus has been getting the-
Up here.
What I refer to as the five acres up gradient of the roadway, to keep it from going down into that hole.
I'm sorry, do you mind coming to the microphone? Am I repeating that?
Yes. The focus really hasn't been on rain gardens in the back corner here, it's been more on collecting the five acres that are coming down the hill, and getting it into the system where it should be going. There's a, there's a roadway across the back here, this actually has a swale in it that dumps it right there. So, all of this that comes down the hill is directed, and it's not going this way, it's going right there.
And are you comfortable with this design, that it will now go this way, instead of this way?
Yes, it can.
And do you have any concerns then about the driveways and the catch basins in a heavy rain event?
Not really, no.
All right. So, Julie, does that help answer your question with regard to grading?
Catch basins raised.
[laughing].
Not yet, no.
Probably.
Not working yet.
Somewhat. I, I think we, dear Butters, should at some point be invited to actually see the other side, and what's happening. I think visually, we'd have a better chance of knowing what's going on over there when we're told things are happening. I just hear, you know, the tractors and things like that, and then I see the effects. So, if something positive is happening at some point, I'd like to be invited to see myself.
Would you like to have a tour before we meet in two weeks?
That would be awesome.
Can you arrange for that tour?
I defer to David.
What, sure. What, what would a tour consist of?
It would, it would consist of you showing me. Showing approximately where things are going, so that she has an understanding of where the scope of work would be.
What do you say, where things are going?
You have things proposed on the plan that aren't existing today, right?
On the drainage plan?
Well, if you, let's just say you walked over and you said, "Right now, what you see here, this is where soil's going to go, it's going to capture the water," and you walked down the road and you say it's going to go over here. Give somebody a picture of what's going to go in there.
You can take-
And through the chair, Julie, is that what you want to see, where the, where the drainage stuff is going to be going in? Or what, specifically through the chair, what would you like to see?
I, I would like to see all of it, to be quite frank. I would like to see where the water is going, I'd like to see where the grading will happen, I'd like to see where the, the water collection actually happens in that depression that was mentioned, because I think that's right behind my neighbor's house, and I would love to know how that's going to impact him. So, there's lots of things I'd like to see about-
Through the chair, would you mind, Julie, just pointing on the plan, kind of like, like, just so, just so I could talk to the folks, I could show you these things? What exact things would you like to see?
Okay. So, Bill is helping.
Do you mind taking this with you, and just pointing out there?
Trying to pick me a star.
I'm fine. You're already a star.
I only do that in my classroom, in the old days. Now, I'm a star in my garden. So, I would like to see what's happening right here, with what will happen if there is grading happening. I'd like to see what that would look like, and that explained to me. And yes, I would like to see where this water is going to run off into this rain garden, and where eventually, perhaps, we'll end up in this, what's called a berm? Is that, is that what you said?
Yeah.
So, I would like to see that. I would like to see this catchment area, because I was, I, I think I heard that it's right now not functioning the way it's supposed to-
Yeah.
-with the clay. I'd like to see what happens to make the change with the new rocks, or whatever layers are going to be put in, to ensure that water is actually collected there, and doesn't actually get dispersed onto our properties. And then, I would like to know at some point, and the engineers would know this, I, I thought that if, that plans for water, changing the route of water, when it, there's a hill, is that it changes it so it comes uphill. I was wrong about that? It still goes into the, the land.
But it doesn't go uphill.
Yeah. I, someone, someone, an engineer told me, it was supposed to be redirected, so it goes this way into drainage. I thought it was interesting, but I don't know. So, eventually, so this here is now full, and there's a way to ensure that it will be collecting water, and the water still seeps down into the land, but slowly, so it doesn't.
So, I, I'm happy to arrange for a tour for you. If you won't mind, give me your, is email the best way to reach you?
I gave you my card months ago.
My, your card?
My card.
Oh. I don't have it.
But I, I can write it down.
Great. Thank you.
All right. While you do that, Bill?
They can show where this is going to be. They can show where this is going to be, they can show where this is going to be. They can explain what this is going to look like, because on the next page is actually a detail of what this will look like.
Thank you.
On the next page is a detail of what this will look like. Can he show what this looks like in actuality? No, he's going to have to show it on the detail.
He can show where it is.
Just give an idea.
But you're not going to show you in the ground where it's going.
Everyone knows that.
The other part is this piece here, yes. The grading that needs to be done, there's a stockpile here, the stockpile needs to be moved.
But that's the kind of thing, Bill, maybe you can go along on the tour and explain the things that you know that are need, that are going to be done, like the stockpile, so that's not a concern that that's going to be the final result. And you can point out the retaining wall location, which I think was the other question you have, when you do the site walk, it'll be easier to understand.
Yes, so through the chair, my, my thought was that I'd arrange for our peer, the condo's peer review expert, who's been working on this, and we'll set up a tour with Sean Riley from Coastal Engineering and myself, and we can walk you, walk the site and answer your questions. How's that? We can do that.
Okay, very good.
If I'm available, could I join them?
Sure, so you have the email address.
Email you too?
If I'm available, I might join you, just out of curiosity, if that's okay.
Bring the landscape plan with you.
What's that?
Bring the landscape plan with you, so they can see where the different pieces are due to be.
We can do grand tour of everything.
If you would, please notify Bill or Lauren what the date would be. They can send it to the rest of us, and whoever is interested and available can join if they'd like. Is there anyone else here in the audience who would like to address the board? Please, come forward. You're going to become a star too.
My name is Lyra Settlesing. I live at two ninety-five Brush Hill Road. We've lived there since nineteen ninety-two. We bought our home from the original owner, Mr. Falcioni, wonderful man, who actually sold, um, the property, the land, behind our home, I think, to Brushwood Estates. And the only reason he told us he ever did that is because he was promised that nothing would ever be built there. And he asked us to be sure that nothing was ever built there. And we've been there since nineteen ninety-two, and we, my husband and I still feel that we failed him by not having had an opportunity to reject the proposal to build in that area, because it's happened, and he foresaw problems with buildings going there. He said he only sold half of his lot because he was told that they needed more green around Brushwood Estates. But for that, he would have kept the whole area. However, it's done, water under the bridge. But back in the nineteen nineties, after we had moved there, there was a significant rainstorm, and water came down from Brushwood down to our home on the side border.
Can you point out to her home?
It's hard, is that our home? Yep. I'm having a little hard time, um, being able to figure out which wall, so it was Brush Hill Road on this. Yeah, so, um, where's Brushwood Estates? All of this. So, um, okay, thank you. It was the sidewall between our home and Brushwood, so it would probably be, yeah.
You have a stone, you have a cement wall.
Correct.
Right there.
So this, um, so the sidewall brought water down to our home.
Bill, is there a wall, is there a wall that directs something that way?
No.
Where's the entrance to Brushwood Estates?
Way down here. No, Bill, it's not.
It is. Brush Hill Road, way over here. Brush Hill Road goes up and down over here.
So if Brush, this is Brush Hill Road, it's a sidewall between our home and Brushwood Estates that is green now. And water just came down past that wall and flooded our basement. This was back in the nineteen nineties. We had to rip up all the old carpet and everything, and we just put tile in our basement that led to a sump pump, so that we wouldn't have to deal with that again. And the problem came, with the water, was the storm was so bad, my husband had to put a ladder up, jump over the fence, and clean out some clogged, um, drainage there. And when he did that, the water started to recede. It was a nightmare. So that was our first indication that there were drainage problems coming down the hill. So now, we are quite close to, to this thing.
So you must, you must see this.
I'm having a little hard time.
Do you see a stockpile of dirt?
Yes, yeah, it's right here. Okay, so this, there we go, that's the stockpile. So our biggest concern now, because we had complained that since the project started, we're getting a lot of water along this fence, and I think you had come by our home one time.
I was there too.
Yeah, and, and walked along with my husband. That is barely now getting to be soil that is a little bit dry, but in the summertime, it's still hard to mow this area, because it's soggy. And our concern is that with this drainage structure right here, how much greenery will actually be able to be put in here to try to catch some of that water because of this structurally being in the way? And we would like to have some buffer, because we have two concerns. One, water coming under our fence and being very loose. This past winter, we lost six pine trees in the backyard that just came down with one. We had many storms this summer, this winter. And we had to spend a couple thousand dollars to get those trees out of there. And there are still some, but the, the earth there is very loose, and we would like some reassurance that that is going to be, the drainage system is going to work, so that our back portion, close to the fence, is not so wet. And it's distinctly wetter than the soil that's closer to our home. And, um, the other concern we have is that when the building went up, the home went up, that's, um, directly visible from our back view, two, there are two garages that face our home. If people back into that garage or turn out of that garage to drive out, there's direct headlights coming into seven rooms in my home. And I, we would like to know that there's some provision for mature enough trees that give us some buffer than having to look into headlights coming out of those garages. And I called the town, at the time it was Tim who was working on the problem, he said that, um, in the town of Milton, they don't ask for, um, you know, any kind of, uh, consent, because in some towns they do, in terms of the directions of garages to neighbors' homes. And so we were hoping that there would be some provision with greenery that would at least shelter some headlights that could be coming at our home.
There, the landscape plan does indicate some, and we will ask that you make sure that you include that in that buffer zone that we've been talking about when you come back to us with the plan in two weeks.
Glad you brought that up.
Appreciate it.
It's part of the red, I think, if you looked at this, we were talking about Julie over here, now we're talking over here, right? So it's still in that red zone. Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to address this? Yes, Mr. Song?
Can I just comment on that? That, that's why I had said, and that's why the plan calls for a variety of trees that are of different heights, so that it will block things like headlights. Something came to mind when she was talking about, I think it's like six trees falling. I did notice that you have white pines on the list, and white pines grow tall and big and fast, and they're great, but they're shallow root system, and they tend to be one of the ones that fall easiest. So that we probably would not want, especially on the back. Are you in the back of the plan? That's just a thought.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Joe Sloan. I live at fifty-five Concord Ave, which in Milton is known as part of Precinct Ten. And I'm a, a town meeting member in Precinct Ten, and I and another town meeting member, Leroy Walker, have, uh, at a number of occasions over the past year or so, spoken before this board and, uh, before the Board of Appeals, in support of the neighbors who have been so severely affected by the water runoff on their properties. As you acknowledged earlier, it's a very complex process. And it can be, it can be tricky to navigate the process. There's often lots of opportunities and invitations for the public to participate on the front end of a project like this, but it's a little bit challenging to figure out which way to turn when your property is affected in the ways that some of these properties are affected. So, um, I've simply stepped forward to support my neighbors and, uh, and my friends, and to help them through this process. A couple of things that I heard earlier tonight that, um, that concern me, first of all, the, the, I think that the outreach to the neighbors, considering the amount of information that the planning board and other, other elected officials in town have heard about this, and and you acknowledged, uh, earlier tonight that you were aware of the, the tremendous impact to the abutters. I'm disappointed to hear that possibly, you said, one letter may have been sent to an abutter, um, in this process. I think given as far along as this is, I would have expected, um, more outreach to the neighbors who have been so severely affected. I actually received a, a telephone message from Mr. Agostino earlier this year to say that he had seen me speak before the planning board at an earlier time, and could I get in touch with him, because he was looking toward a solution. Well, I didn't return that phone call, because he didn't identify himself as an attorney for the developer. I had to figure that out. And also, at that point in time, it was not publicly known that a settlement was, uh, was, was being worked toward, that the information that I had from, um, from the planning board and from the town administrators, that this was in court. And there was no further discussion on that. So I did not wish to put myself in an awkward position simply by returning that phone call and possibly, being misrepresented at some point. So, uh, I've, I've been sticking with the neighbors. I've not heard neighbors who have been so severely affected talk about having their concerns addressed simply by planting a lot of trees in the buffer. I've heard about people concerned about what has happened to their property. So I'm hoping that as part of this process, that the planning board can get some assurances from the developer, that the specific concerns, like the concerns that we heard Julie, uh, address, these financial concerns are in fact going to be addressed by this. With a hundred and thirty-five trees being planted, I didn't hear anything about any possibility of there being any tree replanting on any of these properties. Excuse me. And I also think that it's important that we know the extent of this damage, because we've heard some of it, but we haven't heard from everyone. There was a gentleman that spoke before the, uh, the Board of Appeals some, some number of weeks ago, and I don't have his name, but he's not here tonight, and I know that he and Mr. Walker expressed to the Board of Appeals that he had significant damage on his property, and had significant tree loss as well. So I think that, uh, this deserves, uh, a, a bit of an outreach effort to the neighbors, to let folks know. I think it would be disappointing if, if one neighbor receives some remediation and another neighbor who is unfamiliar with the process may be learned. I know that, um, you know, that there's, public notice has been published. I think we could go a little further. I think, I think it would be, um, I think that it is amazing to listen to two people come before this board and speak as politely and diplomatically and compassionately as those two speakers before me did. Because these are, these are very caring residents of the town of Milton, whose first impulse was not to call a lawyer, was to come before boards in town and ask for help. Ask for help, can we make this right? Can we make this better? So I'll leave it to the, to, to this board, who I know has given a, a lot of support to these residents, to try and figure out a way that, uh, in fact, as part of, uh, any understanding to, uh, to support an amendment to the site plan approval, that, that there can be a firm assurance that some mitigation of the, of the damage that's been done, um, will be, will be looked at. Thank you very much.
John Flynn, Town Council. Can, can you come and just address the issue of redress for, um, abutting properties? I mean, there's, it's a legal matter, um, and I, I know there's been conversations that we've had, but, um, I think it's important for neighbors and, and other board members to understand.
Good evening, Adam, Chair, members of the board. The issue of, uh, damage to abutting properties and mitigation is a difficult one. I, I really haven't been, that really hasn't come up in the discussions we've participated in. We would have to look into that. To be candid, I don't know that that's within the jurisdiction of the planning board in either forum here or in court to make that a requirement of any decision you have on the pending application to amend the site plan approval.
That was my understanding from our conversation, but I wanted to have you say that for others to hear, and I didn't want to misstate it.
The, the authority that I feel more comfortable talking about is that as in the past, complaints to the town have been addressed through the Building Department or through Public Works, or Departments with Jurisdictional issues like water or landscaping, or compliance with audits of this board.
So, to be clear, it, it's not within our jurisdiction at this site plan approval to be able to address recourse for the neighbors on damage on their property.
By addressing, you mean to require it as a condition of approval?
Yes.
I believe you are correct, yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come address the board? Okay, seeing none, any further discussion of the board before we continue the hearing? Bill, do you have, or Lauren, do you have a time on the eighth that we'll continue this too?
If I may, Chris, I'll let you know what we have on the agenda. We have under new business, there's no scheduled time for this, the Adams Corp. Post Development, including discussion of the build-out analysis and the beta traffic peer review. We have a seven fifteen public hearing, um, the Milton Marketplace Site Plan Approval for the second story. We have a seven thirty advertised public hearing for an amendment to a special permit for Thayer Nursery. And we will likely continue the Walkout Woods Special Permit Hearing, but we don't have a time yet.
So easy night.
Yeah.
All right.
Days when we just do ANRs and stuff.
I know, I know.
What do you think about doing it before the seven fifteen? How, how much time, if you have your work done in?
If I may, I think tonight we heard that as far as fixing the drainage, the concept is sound. So my hope is that, well in advance of that hearing, we receive confirmation that the details are there, and it's done, as far as drainage is concerned.
And then you'll be working with Member Swenson on the landscape?
During, in the interim, we're going to be working on the planting plan, which we can present. And my hope is that we can at least have one concurring opinion on the planting plan, and, you know, the, the rest of the board members can review it, we can present it obviously to anyone else that might have concerns. To the extent, um, you know, there are any specific, we've heard specific requests, so we know specific things, but there, if there are any other specific requests about the planting plan, I would say now is the time to, um, you know, discuss those concerns, so that we can address them between now and the next hearing, so the next hearing, we aren't introducing new problems or new concerns.
Understood. So I, I think if that work, um, happens as discussed, then I'm inclined to put it at, say, seven oh five, rather than having it be at the end. Right? So does that work for folks?
Should we put a placeholder item on our November first agenda, in case they can get this sooner? And if they can't, I would just say it won't be addressed, but if they can.
You can just open it and continue it.
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind doing that, that would actually be, I like the question.
It would actually be better if you could do it.
Yeah, my only concern in those instances is where we promise it, it's not there, and then invariably it's, yeah.
It's a great idea.
Then if the opportunity presents stuff and get out of it the way, then the eighth is gonna be a disaster.
And then we could just continue it.
It may be better for you, too.
That works.
Sounds like the eighth is jam-packed. And if you had to, we could just open it and continue it again. Good point, April. So what time on the first, then, do we wanna?
We can do 7:15.
Okay, 7:15 on the first? And that's agreeable to both of you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, before you close and continue, you, so the agreement is that Mr. Chrisman will continue as your peer review person?
Yes.
Page four, by?
Oh.
The applicant, as a condition of any approval, we expect to receive an invoice for a bill that will fund future construction monitoring and whatever expenses are out there. So we're making sure it's not gonna be a problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I need a motion to continue?
Should it continue?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to continue to 7:15 on November 1st.
I know, I realized it after I said it, that I wasn't very specific.
The what? I do. I don't have it under here.
There you go. Because I was gonna say, it's in the letter.
Okay, so we will now move on to the 6:30 special permit hearing at 1240, 1244 Randolph Avenue.
Some of it's mine, some of it's yours. I got a little aggressive with my real estate.
You always do. You spread it all over the place.
Totally my thing.
I'm usually his neighbor, and I'm squeezed in.
See my shopping centers.
We like that big table downstairs, right?
I like this room better, though.
I like chairs better.
I like windows, the chairs are more comfortable.
No, it's also just a better conversation.
Thank you.
So much better. I don't like that room downstairs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think this is yours, Danny.
Too long, though.
I have duplicates of all those.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, John, Kevin.
I know, I wanna take one of these now.
I know.
They're pretty good chairs.
Let's see whose chairs they are.
The board of select would notice that we switched off. Put these down in the blue.
Thank you for coming.
The select board, the select board.
Select board, yeah, yes.
Hi, Phil. Good, how you doing?
Hello, Ms. McCaffrey.
Hi, Mary. Good evening.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, Mary. I'm Mary McCaffrey. I'm here with Bunny Thomas.
Bunny Thomas.
And we have an application for a permit for landscaping business use. 1240, 1244 Randolph Avenue. I put the site plan up there, and we should have extra site plans that were delivered to you, I guess. So let me just, my notes out here. This is as if I hadn't had time to prepare, so, but I was listening, it was kind of interesting. So I'd like to, you know, present a description of the application to you tonight, but before I begin, I have a couple of additional materials. I have copies of letters from the direct abutters on either side of the property, another neighbor who lives up behind on the same side of the street, and I can also report that Mr. Thomas has spoken several times to all of his immediate abutters. He owns property directly across from 1240, 1244 Randolph Avenue, so he's an abutter to his own property, and he has abutters on either side. The Susie family, for example, has spoken to them. He has not had any indication from anyone that there is a problem with the current operation of the site, that there are changes that they would like, that they're dissatisfied in any way, and he's received good support from those who live nearby. So, these are copies of the letters for the board. Also, in addition to the application, after I filed this application, I sent you a second, two more letters. The first, the first letter just had some corporate documents for Andrew Thomas &amp; Sons, Incorporated, which is the corporation that operates the landscaping and nursery business. I just thought you might wanna have those in the file. And they do indicate that Bunny Thomas is the president and the treasurer. And then, more recently, I sent you a letter asking if you would allow us to add Thomas Family Real Estate Trust, or Realty Trust, as an applicant, and I believe that it would be best for the Realty Trust to be an applicant, along with Andrew Thomas &amp; Sons, Inc., which is the corporation that operates the nursery, because of this whole issue of, when did the special permits, when were the special permits issued, who were they issued to, and then, you know, how does the special permit become the predecessor in interest to the current one? And the concept of a successor in interest, or predecessor, the person who comes before, in the real estate context or the zoning context, would tend to be land ownership. So you should have continuity. You should be able to look at where the special permit came from for the land, where it went, and who owned the land subsequently. So I'm gonna go through the whole application, it'll be some water.
Sure. So you want us to open our booklets here?
Yes, and, of course, I'm not gonna read it word for word, but I tried to track the bylaw in the way that I organized the application, so.
I noticed that. And the bylaw, just for everyone, is at the back of the memo that Lauren put together, so the actual language of the bylaw, if you wanna kind of follow along that with the application itself.
Being here is interested in the position of plan, and I don't really have any place to put it, but I'll just do that. So I included with my application a narrative, went through the elements of the bylaw. I also included, as appendices, the site plan, all of the deeds and recorded plans, the land records that relate to this site, a 2002 site plan decision by the planning board for the site, planning board correspondence after that decision, and then the original nursery special permits, which were issued in 1955 and 1963. And I have a building commissioners enforcement letter, which was in February this year, basically telling the nursery business that they were going to have to apply for a landscaping permit, because now that's required for this type of business. I have a list of landscaping and nursery farm business activities that were provided by the applicant. I have a list of landscaping and nursery business vehicles provided by the applicant. These are all descriptions as of 2012, that's supposed to be the year that sets the parameters for how, the size of such a business. I provided a copy of the farming statute, just for general interest, it's not really directly relevant to this application. And finally, there's a letter from the fire chief approving the fuel storage tank. He inspected it and said that it was in good shape and nothing had to be changed. So the history of this site is that Bunny Thomas's parents owned three small lots at, across the street from the site that's designated as the landscaping site, at 1237 Randolph Avenue. And in 1955, they applied for a nursery special permit, as is allowed in our bylaws, and they received a permit. Again, in 1963, they came back because they wanted to build a new greenhouse at the site, so they were issued an additional permit or an amended permit, again, to both of them, to Louise and Andrew Thomas. In 1976, Andrew Thomas Incorporated, Andrew Thomas &amp; Sons, Inc., Nursery and Landscaping Business, and that has been the business entity from that time until the present day.
I'm sorry, again, what year was that again, Mary Ann?
1976.
1976, thank you.
So, I don't know how old you were in 1955, Bunny, and I'm not gonna ask, but I assume that, you know, Bunny Thomas grew up on this site.
Yes, I was born and raised at 1237.
And probably had to work on the premises.
Working since I was about this high, with a shovel in my hand, that's how I got so big hands, so.
I mean, you know, these nursery, this type of landscaping business, that's the kind of person you referred offhand, clearly, to earlier in that hearing, when you said, these are the people with the trucks and the shovels, and they do a lot of the work on these sites, and this has been the case with Thomas Nursery and Landscaping. They've worked all over town, many of us know them. Because of this change, they're now required to apply for a special permit, and one of the advantages of having to have that process is that it's an opportunity to address issues if there are problems, and it's also an opportunity to have a permit, a special permit, that says you're legal, you can do what you're doing right now. So I think this application, basically, is an application to approve the existing operation, and that's because we haven't found that there have been, there are problems, there's no drainage issue that's been reported to us.
Mary Ann, you know, some of us were on the board when the, when this bylaw was passed, and when the first application under it came through, and the discussion about what can be regulated under the nursery versus farm, I think is something that's worth going over, if you don't mind. Just right, I mean, at some point in your discussion here, you can choose when to do it, but, you know, because this idea that this has to come forward now for a business that's been operating this way for a long time, I think it's just useful to give that background a little bit.
I will, and I'll try to fill it in as I go along. I've certainly been thinking about it a lot, because particularly here, when I see the size of the site, which is more than nine acres, when you, when you take all of the land that's owned in common on both sides of the street, and most of the land is on this side, 1240, 1244 Randolph Ave. In order to be qualified today as a farm, you have to have at least two acres, this is under state law, you have to have a certain amount of, you have to cultivate on the site. You can bring plants in, but you have to grow them on the site, it has to be, there are certain percentages of cultivation area, and there are certain percentages of sales, not a very high bar, and certainly this site meets them. So if this site had no other type of permitting, it would meet, it would be qualified as a farm. And as a farm, it's exempt from zoning regulation in many respects, but there are aspects of the way you use a location or a site that may be subject to regulation. And one example of the way the town applied that was in 2002, that's when, by that time the site was nine acres, and Mr. Thomas wanted to build a new greenhouse, and he felt that perhaps, because he had, you know, he would be qualified as a farm use, he shouldn't have to go through a review process for the greenhouse. But the town said no, that he needed to go for site plan review, which he did. And in the course of going for site plan review, the board, the planning board did make changes in their, and required in their decision, that the site be rearranged in certain ways, particularly as to material storage and where the trucks were parked, and how much parking was available in the front of the site, as opposed to in the rear. Those requirements, which were implemented, have been followed, and they have improved the site's operation, I think you'd probably agree, because what they've done, what they, what that decision did was, and it was based on some complaints and concerns from neighbors, it moved the traffic to the center of the site. It moved the material storage from the front right, which was right next to an abutting property, residential property, moved it to the rear, which was away from residential properties. And it, you know, it allowed the new greenhouse, which was the purpose for which the applicant had come to the town. But that was based, there's some discussion in that decision about the farm use, and basically what the planning board decided that year was, there is some regulation we can do, even if it's a farm use. So that's the farm part of it. In Milton, if you're a nurse, if you wanna run a nursery, there are a couple of different ways in our current bylaw that you can do it, the bylaw's a little bit outmoded, but it basically says that, you know, if you have more than two acres of land, you can apply for a nursery special permit. The bylaw actually says that you have to grow everything on the site, which has never really been the case with nurseries, and it hasn't been enforced that way, but there's some cultivation that's supposed to occur.
The same kind words that you can bring it in from off-site and continue to grow it?
And under the farm bylaw, horticulture, that's what horticulture is. So horticulture is a farm use, which was kind of interesting to me, I mean, until I started reviewing these statutes, I didn't really understand that. So when Bunny Thomas's parents applied for their first permit, they didn't have very much land. They had to apply under another part of our bylaw that says you can apply for nursery use if you have less land than that, and that, that still exists, I don't know whether it may need to be revised or not. So they started out with a very small site. When Bunny, Bunny was, the property on, at 1237 Randolph Ave was conveyed to Bunny in 1992, and in 1993, he purchased the site at 1240, 1244 Randolph Ave, from the estate of the previous owner. The previous owner had run a riding stable on this land. And that made him then eligible as a farm use, as well as everything else. Well, what he did was he continued the business with his, I guess, probably still with his family. Is your father still running the business some?
No, no, he was, he actually passed away when we, I finally purchased the land. We were using it before, about two years after his death, we built the garden, and he didn't see it. My mother saw it, but he didn't see it. But it's been continuing on, I mean, we built it up, we built it up, and, you know, trying to do the right thing for our neighbors and everyone else, for the town.
So it certainly has been your business, Bunny, since then, I mean, we're all, we all associated with Bunny Thomas, so. So, starting anyway, in 1993, this was a large site, it had the farm qualification, it was still being operated as a nursery and landscaping business, which it had been since 1955. Even in the 1955 permit, although they didn't really know what to do with the landscaping use, they talked about it, that this was permitted as a nursery, there was also some landscaping, they weren't really sure what to do about that, and that was the end of it. And that's pretty much what's happened, had previously happened with nurseries in Milton, many of them were doing landscaping. And it was just included as the nursery use until this recent case that now required that the town pass it in bylaw. So anyway, that's the history.
So, Mary Ann, excuse me for a moment, that case, do you mind just giving a little bit of an explanation?
The Coulter Nursery case.
Yes, do you mind just giving a little background on that?
I believe it was a land court case, it was appealed, what happened was Coulter had a small nursery business, and it's a small site, it wasn't like these, some of these other large nursery sites we have, on Route 138, and he had a neighbor who was not happy with the fact that he was doing landscaping on this small site, and so the Board of Appeals had granted continued special permits for Coulter Nursery and Landscaping, and finally, one of them was appealed by the neighbor successfully to land court, and then, I'm not even sure what happened, it never reached the appellate stage from a decision standpoint. So as precedent, it doesn't, it's not really precedent-setting, because it didn't go to appeals court. It's not necessarily directly related to what's happening here, because it was a small site, and this site is much larger and has the farm use.
But wasn't that the background for us establishing the bylaw?
Yes, yes, it certainly was.
Right, that's my understanding, okay.
The town wrote two bylaws. The first one was, had some specifics that applied to a site that was on a state highway. This almost qualified, it was one little thing that might, I looked at both bylaws, thinking, which one should I apply under? The second bylaw was written several years later, and Thayer Nursery used that to apply for its landscaping special permit. That's the bylaw that I used for this application, because in all respects, this site meets the requirements that are set out in that bylaw, including the successor in interest to a nursery permit, and all of the characteristics of the landscaping business.
So, excuse me again? So, excuse me again, the successor in interest, it's probably a legal term, right? But that means the fact that Bunny has carried on his parents' business, that's the successor in interest?
Yes, but you also have to look at the land ownership. And in this case, Bunny acquired the land from his parents, he acquired some other land, it's all contiguous, all became part of the same site. And in two thousand and thirteen, he put all of this land into the Thomas Real Estate Trust. Bunny Thomas is the trustee for the trust, and he's also the beneficiary of the trust, which is interesting because often in a trust, it's not, that's not the case. Beneficiaries have different rights as to a trust. The trustee has an obligation to manage the trust properly, and usually the trustee, or sometimes the trustee has, in the, in the way the trust is written, has authority to do real estate transactions, which is the case with this real estate trust. So currently, all the land is owned by the real estate trust. So the trust and Andrew, and Andrew Thomas and company, and company is, are the successors in interest. One's the operator, the other one is the landowner. That's how I would put it. You know, there may be different ways of addressing this, but I believe that if, with your permission, that the applicant should include his real estate trust as an applicant. And that's only after really looking at this issue, even after I had prepared the application. So I hope that you'll allow me to add that. Okay, so that's the history of the land ownership. The business has continued to be run by the corporation, and it is run as a combined business. There's no separation between nursery and landscaping. I reviewed this just yesterday with Bunny's secretary, who's an administrator, who's really, really organized. I have to say, every question has, the answer has come right back to me, which has been great. They keep the books together. They maintain the site together. There are piles of mulch and loam and compost and that kind of thing. They're used for both businesses. So it's not possible in this permit, really, and probably is easier from a permitting sense to issue a permit, it's not possible to separate the two functions and say, for the most part, you know, when you, when, if you decide to allow the landscaping business and you say they can have this many employees and this, and they can have a site layout as we've shown you here where materials have to be stored in bins in certain areas, that's for everything. It's just the way the business works.
That's the way the bylaw's written too, though, right?
Well, it could be, but it would be possible, and remember that what the applicant has asked to do here is, he's not including twelve thirty-seven Randolph Ave. That can continue to be a nursery business, it can't be a landscape, it can't be used for landscaping if, you know, this all goes forward as we requested. So that's a particular characteristic of this site. Other things that make this site a little different from some other sites, the fact that they're on Randolph Ave, Route twenty-eight is a state highway, the traffic is unbelievable. I mean, it's just gotten worse and worse over the years. I hope it's still a good, it's a good location for a business because a truck can bring in materials directly from the highway. But it probably is somewhat inaccessible during the rush hour.
Air plugs every night.
Yeah, and it's noisy all night, yeah. So that, that, when we spoke to neighbors, I think as Bunny has worked with them over the years, noise has not really been the issue with this site. Sometimes visual buffers were the issue. So a few years back, I don't know when exactly, maybe two thousand and four, Bunny put a berm and trees on the right side of the property as you face it, right at the edge. And those are well grown up now, they seem to be quite healthy. And they are a complete barrier, I can't see when I stand on his side, I cannot see the neighbor's house. Years ago, it was a previous owner, the neighbor had some complaints, and in fact was one of the people who's saying, I don't like those mulch piles and things in the front of the site because they're bothering me. So that visual barrier went up, and also the site was reorganized and took care of the problem. There are currently also pine trees and wood fencing, there's also a fence on that side, on the left side, so between the two residential neighbors and the site, there are trees and fencing. The rear of the site is owned by the Boston Animal Rescue League, and it's land that can be only used for the protection of animals, it's basically open space. So there is no sense of someone who would feel that the site was an intrusion. And the growing area on the nursery site is to the right rear, so it's a very large growing area. And when you look at the site, you almost think the Animal Rescue League land is part of the site. I'm sure Bunny would like to have it, but the Bellevue, the owner of the riding stable, Bellevue, sorry, I guess gave it to the Animal Rescue League in his will.
Yeah, they, he wanted to have so much land preserved for the animals, you know, he's an animal man, and so that was cut out and saved for the animals, so now the animals get the grass up there, so.
So that's beyond your planting area?
Yeah, on the right-hand side, you'll see the.
There's an, there's a electric fence along the back of the property because of deer.
A deer fence, I had to put it up.
It's a deer fence.
They just destroy us.
Yeah.
Coming up in the Blue Hills.
So that fence, of course, will be maintained. What we did find, when DeZelberg came in and did the on-the-ground survey plan, they found that some little sections of the fence were a little bit over onto the Animal Rescue League property.
We didn't have any stakes at that time. I mean, there was no survey stakes, and we, he said, okay, this line right here, that's where we, you know.
So we, you know, that, that will be moved. That's one of the only changes. And you can see in the color version of that plan, I think it's marked in red where it's off. The other thing that Mr. Thomas would like to do is he wants to put a security gate on his driveway, which is in the center of the property, just to make the buildings to the rear of the property more secure. Okay, I just want to see if there's more, certainly more detail, and I, yeah, I'm going to go through some of the other requirements for the special permit. He submitted a site plan, and the site plan has, it shows the existing drains and receptacles for water on the site, which go down and connect to Randolph Avenue, the state highway, where there are drains that are under the jurisdiction of the state. So the only areas that Bunny maintains on his own property, and these were installed when it was still Bellevue riding stables. If you see on the left of the site, you should, you can see a drainage, a drain coming down on the left, and there's a, an opening partway down that you can open if you need to clean the drain.
We maintain them, cleaning them as is needed, of course, you know, our best interest. So we do it every about a month or two months, depends, you know. Heavy downpours, Tom, I mean, sometimes from the Blue Hills. I mean, in springtime, we get some strange water coming in there. I mean, you know, we brought it up to the, the Blue Hill Spring Water used to have wells right there, two doors up, and that water would always come down, still comes down from the Blue Hills. I mean, when the gas company put the line in through the Blue Hills, they were supposed to maintain all the drains that they put in to catch water, they never have, ever. And so the water just spills right over that, comes right into our property. So we're obligated to take care of that, and so we do. Just, that's part of our job, that's all, we just take care of, make sure the drains are working and everything's maintained, so we do that.
When the water exits the property, the storm drains that exist go, go into the storm drains in the street. And if water is just flowing down the property, there's a storm drain on both sides of the property, so it goes into the drains there. The whole grade, if you, if you were to walk the site, you'd see there's a gradual up grade to this whole property. The town engineer has reviewed the site plan and has not asked for any, you know, we met with him to see what else he might like us to put on the plan, there were a couple of things, but he hasn't asked for any further changes. And I don't know that you've heard anything further built, but I don't think so. I would expect that we would have heard back from him. There haven't been any complaints from neighbors about water flowing sideways onto their sites. We think that the brunt of water flow is taken by the nursery site and they deal with it. And they have a big growing area in the back of the site. So I have to believe that some of the water, as it comes down, is absorbed by that large growing area.
We try to absorb it, but, you know, in certain areas where you got pathways, it's going to come down, so, and we capture it in the drains. So there's nothing spilled on our neighbors and such.
I've talked about, well, let me just say that there are existing buildings on the site. There's a garden center in the front, you can see it on the site plan. There's a wood barn in the rear, there's a maintenance building in the rear. There was a house in the site that has been taken down, and that made it.
Being repaired.
Yeah, that's actually provided more area for material storage in the rear of the lot. In terms of operations, there are no changes proposed for vehicle movement on the site. The center location of the driveway is ideal in terms of protecting neighbors from, you know, truck noise and that kind of thing. And trucks go back, go into the back to do materials, to take materials or deliver materials. The material storage area has these large cement block bins. Those are shown on the plan. And those bins basically define how much material you can hold on the site at any one time. So they, I guess they, they create a limitation, if you want to put it that way, if you have a concern with that. We haven't heard any, any concerns about the amount of deliveries or trucks going in and out of the site. It's on such a busy highway that it just, the highway is more, has more impact than the site, as it turns out. The site plan shows the square footage and setbacks on all the buildings, and all of them do happen to correspond to current zoning setbacks. This site is interesting because one lot's in a double A zone and the second lot's in a three zone. But it has no particular relevance to this application, we're not proposing any new buildings. There is probably a shed that's too close to the lot line, that it's a really small, not wonderful shed, it could be moved, it doesn't have to be moved, because once a building is built and it's there for ten years, it becomes legal. And so there isn't any need to change anything on the site, and there are no plans to change, to build any buildings. In Appendix Five, I provided a list of business activities. Basically, these are the business activities that are allowed by the bylaw for landscaping. I'm just going to pull out.
So.
So you have to go to the appendix, it's.
Appendix Five?
Appendix Five. So, you know, I, I provided this list as a list of business activities, and I provided the hours of operation relating to the, those would be the hours of operation that currently are followed, and we are asking for the same hours in this application. So there's constructing, installing, and maintaining lawns, trees, shrubs, gardens, patios, related grounds, and other outdoor areas owned by others. That activity goes on Monday through Saturday, seven to six P, seven AM to six PM, from March first to December thirty-first. This business closes in January and February. The sale of trees, sod, seed, loam, mulch, and related materials and stones, stone dust, gravel, pavers, landscape ornaments, timbers, and related materials for landscape design, same hours, Saturday, Monday through Saturday, seven to six PM. The, the amount of firewood sold annually in two thousand and twelve did not exceed five hundred cords, and that's the limitation that we would be asking for in this permit.
So Marian, I saw one hundred listed elsewhere, is that?
I think that's a mistake.
That's a mistake?
Is it five hundred or one hundred?
We don't, we don't use that much, I mean, we don't sell that much, that's like a little.
Which is it, which should it be?
Fifty cord, maybe, fifty?
Is it, should it have been one hundred? I think it, sometimes I started out with five hundred, and then Bunny Tubling's not even five hundred.
Yeah, there's no way.
So if you'd like.
Maybe a hundred cord at the most.
We'll make it a hundred.
Yeah, it's just, I just noticed an inconsistency there, so.
Yeah, that's, that was, I corrected it in one place, not here.
Firewood is not our big business. It's a, something that a customer or, or coming into the garden center, he needs a few logs for his fire, I mean, it's not our big one for us. Because we close down winter. I don't stay around.
You get to go to where it's warm?
Too cold here, too cold there. I've been spending forty-five years, I don't plan to stop it.
So like many nursery businesses, this business does sell Christmas trees and other holiday materials, that's from November thirtieth to December thirty-first. And when they do that, they, they have hours from seven AM to nine PM. So that's the only time that lights are really on at night at this site, and that's one light on a tall pole to the back, in the back left. It's directed downwards and away from neighboring properties, there haven't been any complaints about this lighting. So we're just asking for approval of that existing lighting. The other existing lighting is a pole light to the right of the garden center.
Like the parking lot?
It's between.
Yeah, but we don't light it at all.
Yeah, it's between the garden center and the parking lot on the right and the driveway. The business closes at six PM.
Yeah, so you don't need, most of the time.
So that light has to be on, would be on towards the end of the day. And during the real landscaping season, it's summer and fall, you know, you don't need it. But it is there, and it's like allowed.
It's there, it gets turned on probably for Christmas season, that's the only time. Other than that, we close at six.
And then I also listed the farm and nursery business activities, the hours are the same. I just wanted to get an eye, to have an idea of how I would distinguish them, even though this permit really isn't trying to separate them, because the business is run as one business. And the main difference is that it's the nurseries business to do the tree, plant, and shrub cultivation, and, you know, bring those in and care for them and then sell them. Thomas Nursery business usually, you know, brings a lot of stock in during the year and tries to sell a lot of stock during the year. They do water, their planting areas in the back, they generally don't add fertilizer, which, you know, I suppose huge amounts of fertilizer were being added, it might be a concern because of all the water that flows down the site. But that's not the case. And the, the landscaping business uses the plants, so they're really doing it together. That's the, that's the way you should think of it.
We've run it that way for fifty years, so I can't change it. It's not throats, so I'm not going to change it.
As long as it works, then the permit, I think, is just going to have to apply to those functions together. The next appendix is a list, is a vehicle and equipment list. Again, here, I've provided two separate lists. One is for nursery vehicles, and one is for landscaping vehicles and equipment. And the reason for the separation here is that this is a landscaping permit. The town, the building inspector does have to monitor replacement of the landscaping equipment because the permit is supposed to limit how many trucks and how much equipment you can have on the site for landscaping. So here, we provided the type of truck, the year, what's GVW, the weight?
Weight.
Weight capacity?
Weight capacity, the max the truck can handle.
All right, so that's, that's how much of a load the truck can take. And the VIN number just identifies the truck, and then this is the title reference for the truck. It's the weight capacity and the model that's important to the building commissioner. I would suggest that the words substantially similar be used for replacement, as a little bit of variation is often necessary because we get new models of trucks and they might be better in one respect, not as good in another. I mean, I'm not writing the permit for you, but I'm just saying that I think that language, even if I drafted it for you, I'd probably suggest that you use that language to describe replacements for vehicles and equipment. The farming bylaw is just there for your reference, that's the next appendix. And the final one is the letter from the fire chief. So, I don't know if that really, let's see what else I want to say here. There's lighting. Truck, truck deliveries should be addressed in a permit like this. This site is already under a truck delivery schedule because it was imposed by the two thousand and two site plan. And it says that the regular business hours, six to seven PM, I mean, seven to six PM, seven AM to six PM are the limits for truck deliveries. I asked Bunny when, he usually has refuse picked up, trash and recycling, and he said that he generally does it in the middle of the day because of the traffic on Route twenty-eight. I would suggest that a permit condition, just say that optimal times based on traffic on Randolph Ave should determine when that occurs. Right now, it's between ten and three usually.
They usually come around ten, ten, between ten and noon. I want that because I don't want any noise. You know, those guys, sometimes when they dump in those dumps, they can make some noise, so. Better do it when all the noise out in Randolph Ave is going crazy. You don't hear it then.
Storage of fertilizer and fuel oil, this business does have fuel oil that it stores, and it has to be inspected by the fire chief, which it has been. Fertilizer is only sold in packaged form, so it's just in packages and they're piled up in a certain place in the yard. Bunny Thomas is the operator of, or the corporation operates landscaping business, and Bunny Thomas is the president and the treasurer. He's usually available, but he employs a garden center manager who is on site if he is not available. And there's also a secretary, administrator, and an estimator. The maximum number of employees. The maximum number of employees during times when the business is operating is eight landscaping employees, 10 garden center employees, and one clerical employee. So I would ask you to allow the existing, as of 2012, and it hasn't changed, the existing number of employees.
I think that's the way the bylaw is written, right? That it would allow for the same operation as long as it was that operation in 2012, right?
Right.
We've actually came down from operation. I used to run six landscape crews in my heydays, when I was younger. But I've toned it down a bit. So now it's just two landscape crews. We've got away from the masonry crews. I used to have two masonry crews also. So we've come down, calmed it down, I wanna say. As we get older, you know, that's what we wanna do. Trying to slow my life down.
So that, so your slowed down represents the staffing you have?
2012, this is the slowed down period. The site plan shows you where trucks and equipment for landscaping and the nursery and farm business are parked. You'll see them on the right rear. You'll see that there's employee parking, it's paved parking in the front to the right of the driveway. And then customer parking is in front of the garden center on the left. And there is really no parking on, whether it's allowed or not, it's simply not practical to park on Route 28. It's far too dangerous.
I wouldn't even chance that.
And there has not been a problem, and you can verify, but I have never certainly personally observed any problem with parking on this site. There's always some space.
Yeah, we have plenty of room.
And so I think that the parking areas, I think somewhere in this permit, I gave the actual square footage, and I think it's like 27,000 square feet of the area is paved, is parking for trucks and for employees and customers.
So do we have a breakdown in there, how many? So it's eight landscape employees. Do they come and they leave their vehicles on site, and then they go out?
Some commute with, like, four of them will come in one car, okay? So there's only the employees for the landscaping, they have, there's four vehicles for the landscaping guys.
Presumably, garden center employees might be more likely to be, have to park on the site.
Yeah, and plus, on the, in the summertime, I mean, when we're really busy in early spring, they'll park across the street in the parking lot at 12:37. That we have right there, the parking lot right on the Randolph Ave. Right now, there's, the construction company was using that parking lot for equipment when they were doing the saw lines on Randolph Ave.
Oh, okay.
So that, that area, that's where, if it's, you know, if it's needed, now it's a busy Saturday afternoon in the spring when you've got people everywhere, those guys will put the cars across the street. So just open up more for customers.
So, just to be clear, the nurse, this is where, you know, nursery business can be conducted across the street. So a nursery truck can be parked across the street, a nursery employee can park across the street. You know, if you were a building inspector and you were checking up on what was happening, you might, that's why you need this identification information. Because if you see the, if you saw the landscape trucks migrating across the street, then you would want to, you know, address that right away. Hopefully, that will not happen, but-
No, not my watch.
I'm just saying that that's why you need to be specific with some of these lists.
As you know, the special permit language that we did write for their nursery was very specific. And assuming it would need to be here as well.
So that, that's my summary of the application. Sorry if I took a long time, but-
I think I asked you to be longer than you intended to be, so. I did wanna, now, I know Lauren did a thorough review, so I wanted to ask for a staff report before we have more questions, okay?
So I did review the application material side by side with Special Permit 11, which is landscaping business use. All of the items in this special permit have been addressed through the application materials. Everything checks out. There is one thing that I noticed, it would be Section 7, Requirements for Landscaping Business Use, subsection E, the onsite traffic loading and deliveries. This, I'll read specifically that line that speaks to this. It says such loading-
Okay, can you just go to the page? Oh, it's on the front, you have it on the front, okay, go ahead.
So I'll jump down to the middle of the paragraph, the sentence that is applicable. The loading and use of noisy equipment may only occur between the hours of 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and the hours of 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM on Saturday, unless an earlier start of no more than one hour is shown to be reasonably necessary for the operations of the landscaping business. As stated in the application narrative, the truck delivery times adhere to the 2002 site plan permit, specifies loam, crushed stone, wood chips, mulch, and other materials to be delivered between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM. The permit requires that if trucks arrive earlier than 7:00 AM, they must turn off engines and wait for the business to open. So that would be one minor deviation from what's specified here.
So, I'm sorry, so the bylaw requires?
Between the hours of 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and the hours of 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday, unless an earlier start of no more than one hour is shown to be reasonably necessary.
So this is a one hour?
I guess what I would say is the business has been operating this way for many years. It was permitted with these hours in 2002. So I would ask for that deviation, only because I'm not really sure why it would, it should be necessary to push it back, since there's been no request, no complaint, and it's on a very busy state highway, so.
Let's look and see what we did up there. I think he might have gone seven up there.
Okay, let's look at that.
I also would point out, though, that whatever you did, this is a very different site.
No, I'm just trying to remember what we did up there.
Okay.
But thank you, I just actually missed that.
That was the only thing that stuck out. Other than that, everything checked out. There's a couple of letters from abutters that we heard from in support of the project, and I also received two phone calls. I don't have the addresses written down, but they were abutters that received the notification, the mailings, and after explaining the application to them that there would be essentially no change from what was already in operation, they were perfectly inapproval of this, and agreed that they should be allowed to operate as they have been.
So we haven't received any correspondence or phone calls in opposition to this, right?
No, we have not.
How far were they notified?
300 foot.
Did we do certified or no?
Yes.
It's abutters of abutters within 300.
Thank you so much for doing certified.
Yeah, we did, I know. You did.
It was worth it, because no one's gonna say that you didn't do it now.
You know, basically, everyone was okay with it. I mean, you know, we've been running that operation, we're not changing it.
I think, my impression so far is that, like any landscaping and nursery business, over the years, there have been issues that have come up. They've been addressed, and I believe that this owner will address any issues that do come up in the future. But the current operation and the way it's laid out seems to be working well and seems to be satisfactory, particularly to the immediate abutters. And it's certainly a business that works all over town. We rely on it, some of us do, so, you know, I'm happy to see that it can work. I guess that's the way I'd put it. I think, you know, sometimes it's, these things just continue. But to put it under a special permit provides a framework that has to be observed. And I think that's really important and helpful.
It's a three-year, that's a renewal, right. Bill, do you have any comments to add to Lauren's?
Yes, I do.
I'm sorry, I'm just asking Bill. No problem, we'll get to you too.
I hope so.
I just wanted to conclude with staff first. Bill, any further comments?
No, I deal with the same Randolph Ave traffic, and see it every day.
Then, then Phil, Mr. Joe Henning, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Phil Joe Henning, 23 Parkwood Drive. I'm the Director of Abutter, 2 Ayr Nursery. I guess there were only a couple of things I wanted to talk about. One is, we have an action in Land Court right now about eligibility with Thayer. And I think it would behoove anyone to read it. Because the, I think it was mistakenly drafted, the bylaw, in the way that it was, and it's extremely specific. And a corporation or an LLC are not, are not necessarily the same as their owner. And we have a lot of citations in our case that demonstrate that. So I think all of the members here are named in the suit. I would just take a careful look at it and make sure that Thomas, A. Thomas Nursery meets the eligibility requirements stated in the law. And really, it's incumbent upon this board to demonstrate that. During the Thayer hearings, our attorney wrote a letter to the board showing why Thayer did not qualify. And basically, my recollection is that the board never really addressed each of the issues that were brought out in the letter. So I think it would be interesting for Marion, for the board, to read it. And if A. Thomas falls into the same categories of, let's say, noncompliance with eligibility, you would have to, you'd have to deny them the special permit. It's just the way the bylaw is. But that's up to you to make that determination. Additionally, I, you know, I have said before in the Milton Times that what goes on at the board can be somewhat akin to Kabuki. It's like elaborate theater. And why I say that is because there are, we spent a year coming up with conditions, and there's like zero enforcement. You talked about parking requirements. They never park where they're supposed to park, and nobody ever comes and checks. I think, really, going forward, that when the board comes up with conditions, it really should be reviewed by the person in town responsible for zoning enforcement to ensure that they have the capability to enforce the bylaw and, or the permit. I think, you know, that, my experience has been that there's an elaborate web of conditions that are supposed to exist to protect my interests, and I find nothing going on. I've, I've never actually met the guy who's the new zoning enforcement employee, never even seen him. So I always wonder, what does he do, where does he go? You know, I've been told by Joe Prondak in the past that one of the most difficult zoning enforcement areas in town is my backyard. So why would I not have seen him? So I guess I'd say that in terms of enforcement, and I think to prevent problems like that going forward, you really need to be sure that the town has the muscle to do its job in terms of enforcement. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, Marion, on the eligibility requirement, you addressed that in the beginning. We don't have an attorney sitting around the table other than you. So I'd say the only thing that the board can do is really seek town council's opinion on it. And, you know, you're providing your opinion on it, and then the board can decide.
Yes, and I have asked you to add as an applicant, Thomas Realty Trust, which is the owner of the land.
Okay.
Because in my view, that's one of the, one of the things that you look at.
Can we have John Flynn look at that for us?
Yeah.
I just wanna do that even if there wasn't an attorney sitting here.
No, I believe it would be wise because-
Protect the applicant and protect the board.
To have a clear understanding.
Right.
And if there is modification required, some change that is required, I would certainly want to know about it now rather than later.
Right.
On behalf of the applicant.
So that, and I can reach out to town council on that. Any other questions of the board members?
Well, I think this is my first special permit on the side of the table. Will the special permit address Joe Prondak's issues in his letter? He, I don't know if it should or not, but, I mean, he mentioned something about meeting up the area and-
Oh, the enforcement letter.
Yeah.
The, those measures have been, were taken care of immediately. And if they hadn't been, Joe Prondak would have done follow-up. But what happened was, he sent that letter, Mr. Thomas contacted me because it was clear he was going to be applying for this permit. And I sent a letter back to Joe Prondak saying that we're going to be applying for the permit, it will take quite a while, because I have to have an engineer come and do an on-the-ground survey, and so on and so forth. But that those issues of park, sloppily parked trucks, I think that was a complaint, would be addressed right away, and they were.
Can we just get an email from Mr. Prondak for the file?
Sure.
Thank you.
It is in the file. The enforcement letter is-
It's been done?
No, we just have the letter.
He doesn't send a letter back.
No, 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 I understand. So I'm just asking if we can get an email from, to Mr. Clark, just saying that it's done, so that we have it for the file.
I can answer that, yeah.
That's great, thank you.
I did contact him, though, to ask him, which is the way I would normally follow up on something like this.
I just have a question, Bill. Since April needs to leave, do we need to do, do we need to continue the hearing now, before she leaves?
If you're not going to vote it, you need to continue it to a date certain.
I know, but can she, I'm just concerned about the, how many meetings you can miss kind of issue, and if there's any issue with her leaving.
One on the special permit.
But it's not considered that if she leaves now, right?
I can save my questions for next time.
Okay.
Sorry, I have babysitter issues.
I was late.
Sure.
I just wanna make sure we don't have any problem if she leaves now, we continue talking about this, you know, before we-
I'd like to know, you know, what issues there might be, so that I could address them, that's the only thing.
Okay.
So can we keep talking, or should we continue?
Shouldn't. If you have issues that you can think of, email them to me.
Email them, Bill.
I will get them to Mr. Prondak or Mr. Flynn.
Okay.
I will put the list together that you have, submit it back to the applicant. We'll go through it and make sure that they're all answered for the first.
And then do, do we expect a third, another hearing after this? Or should we ask for a draft from Ms. McHettick?
I was going to suggest a draft.
I would as well.
I can work on a draft. I know you wanna look at the successor and interest, you know, or get an answer on that. So with the understanding that if there's something required there that I would have to address that.
Of course, my next Thursday.
Yes, sure. I hope, I believe so, because I tried to set up the application.
Otherwise, you're gonna have to go out a little further, because we don't have any more room on the other meeting.
Did the board make a determination as to hours or not?
I think we're, we're gonna look at there, but I mean, I mean, I'll speak for myself, I'm inclined to-
Okay, so I'll leave, I mean, that particular thing, I will leave as a line.
We can fill in, but I think-
Yeah, I'm inclined to go with what you've been running with, with approvals. And given that April has to leave, then-
Sorry, everybody.
Where'd my time go?
Third night out this week.
We'll continue to seven.
7:05.
Is it 7:30?
Prior to 30.
7:05.
Why?
Well, because at 7:30, we're starting Walcott Woods.
Oh, yeah. 7:05.
No, I thought we were doing it for the other meeting.
Are you on the eighth or the first?
We're on the first.
You're on the first?
Okay.
I think you did both.
I think-
The Walcott Woods is next week, next meeting.
And we just put a placeholder for the next one.
What time is Walcott Woods on?
7:30, we have 7:50.
I would do these guys at 7:04, or 7:03. They should get in before that.
7:05, and then we have a 7:15, and then we have a 7:30.
What's the date?
November 1st.
November, so Brian made a motion, right?
Motion to continue to 7 o'clock, 7:05 on November 1st.
Okay, a second. Thank you very much.
Okay, on favor? All right, thank you.
Thank you, sorry, everybody.
Oh, no, thank you, sorry, I was late.
So you're gonna send your-
Thank you, I appreciate it, thanks.
Send to Marion and to Bill.
I can send them to Marion and Bill.
Sure, thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Bill, appreciate it, thank you.
How much snow are we gonna get this year?
I don't care. At least you're on the big island.
You want zero on my shopping centers.
Are we gonna do that, you trying to finish that now? The problem is that, that, okay, so before you'll go, I noticed that that draft approval doesn't reference the photometric plan and the light fixture information we requested.
And you're not gonna be happy about, they're not gonna be happy about this. But I'm not happy with the photometric plan, because I specifically asked-
But wait, that's on, that's on the building, right?
Well, no, this is the site plan. I specifically asked that the photometric plan take into account the wall packs so that you wouldn't have zero light showing on a photometric plan in a parking space.
Yes, you did.
So if you look at this plan, all of this area here, right outside where they have parking, is it 0.0, 0.1? If they show the wall packs on that, on the wall, then that would go away. Those zeros would go away. If they don't have wall packs here, I don't think we should be allowing parking spaces that are gonna be completely dark. that are going to be completely dark. It's ex pocket money.
I see what you're saying. Because I thought they were going to supply that with the building application when we separated these into two applications.
I see. So this is just for the layout.
This is just for the.
I'm happy to reserve that for later then. I'm happy to reserve it for the building application. That's fine.
All right. So, but the issue is that this actually doesn't reference it.
We can add that.
So that was, and then the only other thing I wanted to ask is, Brian, I think under some, one of our other decisions, we've actually added more language as to why or how or something.
What are you talking about?
You have one of these drafts, right?
Yeah, I have it in front of me.
Do you want that to be recorded at the registry?
What, to be recorded?
Site plan approval.
Yes.
We didn't make all of those recorded.
All of whose, are all site plan approvals?
Eleven.
It's on here.
Because there were so many.
I'm confused, what are you referring to?
Well, then what I would do is I would reference the previous.
You can, you can leave it in there, but I know there are a couple of others that were not required to be.
So can we reference them in this recording? That might be a question for John Flynn, but can we reference the previous site plan approvals as part of this? So that this is a site plan, is this a site plan amendment?
This is a site plan approval just for the parking lot reconfiguration, right? So, and we asked them to change the light fixtures, which they did. So this reflects the new light fixtures, right?
Is this a site plan approval or a site plan amendment?
It's written as site plan approval.
I understand, but, okay. So it's overriding the previous. It's overriding the previous ones. We don't need, so we don't need to reference the previous ones because this is going to, yeah, so that's fine. I would say we should record it.
But the other thing is it refers to the second story improvement plan which was pulled out separate, right?
Where on the?
Right here, the first page. I mean, that's under the three bullet points under the supporting.
It refers to that because that is the name of the plan that's submitted, but it shows the parking lot.
All right, so then do we need to add here this?
No, this isn't saying it's an approved plan, it's just referencing.
Okay, okay, then we need to add SL ID dated nine twenty-eight.
That came in after I drafted this.
It's okay.
Add the photo.
Yeah, let's just add it. I just wanted to make sure it was included though because I thought it was important to add it.
I still don't understand your question, this is me. You asked me something about including more language.
Oh, I thought, like, didn't we add a lot more language under the reasons why for a decision on one of the other ones that you asked about?
What we didn't do, right. But that was for something different. That was for, that was for subdivision control and all the things that we were waiving.
Okay.
There's no waivers here that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Right?
So is this consistent, Lauren, with the way we've done other approvals?
Yes.
Okay.
I used a format from a previous decision.
Okay, so then, this doesn't have the actual cut sheet of the light fix, but it has the spec of the fixture, that's fine. The spec's on it, all right.
So everything related to sound and everything is coming.
Coming in the next one, yeah.
Okay, so this is just.
Just to allow what they already did.
That's great.
Which looks great, by the way.
Yeah, I'm in.
Really looks nice.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, so, so I guess what.
If those changes, then you will accept it?
Yeah, do you want to just bring it next week or you want it now? The signature page is now and you can make a change.
Next week so we can get five signatures unless it's.
Right.
Is it original?
They've already done the work.
Sorry, I don't mind signing it now and then you can update it.
That's fine, I left the blank, it's a separate signature page. So if you approve it with them, contingent on the amendments, I can move forward.
I think we can do that.
I think we can do that, yeah.
You should, you've signed one, right? So we all have our own.
We can use.
He has one, she has one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I need a blue pen, I always forget I have a blue pen. Thanks.
Usually, as long as one is blue, then you know it's original.
Okay.
Okay.
Although with the advent of color laser printers, it's pretty hard to tell anyway. Unless you get a bumpy stamp.
Do we have enough?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yes, more?
No.
Oh, right, so, sorry, we're all rushing to go. The planning board budget and the master plan implementation committee budget. Let me go to the master plan one. The master plan implementation committee met, was it last week, Bill and Lauren?
It was the sixteenth.
Sixteenth. And wants to put in a request for $150,000 for townwide traffic studies and $50,000 for planning. So the $50,000 is carryover from the last two years, but the 150 is specifically for traffic because that's.
The 50,000 number is carried over, not the 50,000 from last year.
The 50,000 number is what I meant to say.
So this is master plan implementation committee budget that they're seeking to approve at town meeting in May for 2020 fiscal year.
Yes. And we did, as I mentioned, there's the traffic mitigation committee the select boards formed. So Brian, you'll be in on the next conversations with it. But Dick Burke is the member from the master plan implementation committee who's going to be on that same committee. And he and I were on a call with Bill and Lauren, were you on the call? Yes, Lauren. And the engineer from Beta, Jeff Maxt, how do you say him?
Maxitudus.
Maxitudus. We asked him to put together a scope. So asking for $150,000 is a lot of money. And so while we've had phone conversations about it, we said we really need to have a scope. And this actually, his total in here comes out to less than 150. He's suggesting the development of a model, a townwide model, which if you read through it.
Simo, Simo.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a really great tool. And then even something as simple as you put something a one-way or restriction, you plug that in and it shows you what's going to happen, traffic around the streets around it and everything.
You ever seen a Simo?
No.
Actually, you can see the cars moving, it's amazing.
It's really, you know, I think phenomenal. And then we talked about having it address the major arteries to start with and East Milton Square, Milton Village, Central Ave, you know, sort of the matapan, you know, where everything's kind of feeding in. And then you can also say if you're going to get a traffic study from a project proponent, plug it in right there. You can see, make sure that the study that they've given you is actually.
Okay, we've got to do this.
Right, isn't this a great tool?
Well, the other great tool about that, I mean, we just got an opportunity to start collecting dollars to make bigger improvements rather than tweaking little things everywhere. So this would be the engine upon which those asks would be based.
So you see on page three, that developing the model, you know, it does involve them doing some analysis too, some collecting data, if you will. And so that would be a $60,000 component. And then if you look at the next page.
This is only 87,000?
Yeah, and there's another thing, there's one more in here that you have to look up on page four. He's suggesting $50,000. So you add the fifty.
So it's 137.
137. So I think we'll still go with the 150. And, you know, we may not get anywhere close to it, but at least people can start, traffic comes up all the time, so, you know.
No, let's do it. Or even you could do it in pieces, you could.
Well, that's just it. If the warrant committee said, look, we don't have 150, but we really support the idea and we can give you something.
Yep, let's get started.
Exactly.
It's the new message at town meeting, let's get something started.
So, so we'd like that to be planning board supported.
That's great.
So I'll take a motion.
I would move to support the request from the Milton Master Plan Implementation Committee to request $150,000, $200,000 total budget request broken down as specified by the chair.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
So this is the 150 and the 50 is what?
Further planning studies. So for example, if we needed MAPC to do further work in East Milton Square, right now we don't have any monies to do actual zoning if we decided to do a 40R district, for example. There's no funds left in the master plan, you know.
So we've been, we've been funding the master plan with $50,000 a year for two years?
Right. But we ran short this year, remember?
Yeah, this is sort of a special.
No, this is, okay.
So I would revise my proposal, or I would, as before I revise it, let me ask a question. Do we want to just go with $200,000 and not have it broken down so that we aren't running short? And if, you know, then you have the ability, if we run short, to have an additional $13,000 there.
Bill?
I should not have put my hand up for that one because as a past warrant committee member, you not answer that question. My comment was going to be that we have a ULI TAP coming on the 10th of January. To do something progressing from that, you have no more money.
Right.
So this would be part of that, could be part of that money.
What, the 50?
Next issue that you're going to bring up is this board's amount, which if you can roll them together, you have 15 that you have gotten for the last three years.
We said at the last meeting, we want to bump that up because we wanted the software that, or the tool, the tool. But as far as the master plan and the fund, I mean, we would request 200 and we would say it is our, you know, intent, goal to spend it on these things and not have it be, it's only for that purpose, right?
Then I would just modify my motion to just say that I support the master plan implementation committee request for $200,000.
A second.
A second.
Any further discussion?
Bill, did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Great.
Okay, so Lauren, I had, I did email Katie about getting it on the select board's agenda. She was going to reach out to you. If she hasn't, do you mind reaching out to her so that can get on their agenda? Because the budget has to get to town administrator by next week, right? Next Friday?
Has to be to Amy by the second.
Right, so I don't know the next board, the select board meeting schedule or if it can get on, but if you wouldn't mind following.
The other, okay.
So then the planning board budget, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I give you a quick update?
Sure.
The co-urbanize is brought up. I had another conversation with co-urbanize and the $6,000 a year is not, in the sense the covering, the application, or I'm sorry, the, what's the name of the word?
It doesn't do what you thought it was to do.
Yes.
Oh, that doesn't get us where we need to go.
Remember Wiki Maps? That's what it does. For $6,000 a year, we get a Wiki map.
You get, yes. For those who aren't familiar with the Wiki map, it's.
I understand, but same idea, go ahead.
You get a map and you can, it's similar to the Wiki maps that was used for the Complete Streets program. You can have, you know, signs throughout town that says, what do you want to see here? People can go and use it. It's an interactive map. You can put a dot on the corner of Randolph Ave that says, you know, I want a blinking stoplight here. You can say whatever you want, but it's not a project-specific template, like as if you were thinking of, like similar to the one that we mentioned that Boston has. It's nothing like that. Those go into, they're typically funded by the developer of a certain project. They run thousands of dollars per month. It's a whole different format.
This is the co-urban, is that what you're saying?
Right. If you have both, if you have the town version and the map, you can have them speak to each other, but the one that we would have for $500 a month would not even scratch the surface of what the board was thinking per last discussion. So I want to talk to you with that.
So, so is there a tool that we're aware of or do we need more research about a tool that would help with the communication with the public? A way for the public to be able to give us their feedback online?
I need to do some more research. I don't know one yet.
Can, can the IT person who works for Town Hall help, like suggests like a solution that would work with what we have? Because we have a website and what we want is basically what you do. You upload every meeting, you upload here all the documents related to this project for us. So just in that, that work mode, is there something we can do to have him put it online?
I could certainly have a conversation, but I just, I just don't have an answer right now.
I still think we.
He might be able to suggest, he might be able to suggest something. And then we'll go back to April.
Well, what I was going to say is we, I still suggest putting some figure in the budget even though we don't know what it will be yet. Just like on the master plan, I was going to say, we had that target amount and look how many different things we got done with that. And each one was a vote of the planning board and the select board. Thanks, Mary. Good night.
Mary, good night.
So we would, you know, and just in this way too, I think as long as we have ideas about what we would use those funds for, I don't think it has to be specific to a particular piece of software that's when we put this budget together. Would you agree, Bill?
As we put the budget together, you're correct. We don't have to have the definitive of what the budget is until January.
Okay.
And I need to have it on the page, knowing that this is the amount I'm going for, my, it goes, they build their budget based on that and then we have to have what that breakdown is for the warrant committee as they start to work their numbers. Then you have to have definition to what the numbers are going, which you're using the number for.
Okay, so we have 15. Which line item are we on?
On the far right is what we're requesting, right?
So we're now requesting 50 instead of 15, is that right?
I just stuck a number down and that's why it's here for you to look at. What number do you want?
Well, I would say that if master plan implementation committee is getting $200,000, I know that that's asking for $200,000. I know that that is not supposed to be just planning money, that there's other tasks that they need to accomplish.
I guess.
But I would just, I think if, I'm fine with putting the 50 down, but we better come with a, we better come with a detailed list.
40R zoning would cost what? Did he give us a proposal for that?
And the alternative to co-urbanize, we do want to get.
Those are two things I can think of that, you know, maybe the 50 in master plan isn't going to go to that 40R, maybe that goes to other things and the 40R would come out of, just like we divvied it up this year, right?
But I'm just saying, we better have a list, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, so let's say 40R zoning.
I need to understand this, what you're looking for.
There's another program out there that's Civic Plus that comes from.
Maybe what you do in your work with co-urbanize, like that idea, but like what I would like is, let's say I'm following the Falcone project. I want to be able to go onto the town website, punch into the Falcone button, see everything, see all the plans for Falcone.
Basically a document storage on the website.
You do that in Boston. If you go to the BPDA website and you go under development projects, it'll tell you, and you can search by neighborhood or by address, it'll tell you what stage of the approval process that project's at and you can look at the doc, and you can download the documents like they filed, that they filed. It's not every single document. It's not every single document though, but it's their application which would have a lot of, it doesn't have all the traffic studies and all of that.
But I mean, we don't need something that extensive because it's just not going to be projects.
Yeah. But I think what, this is the feedback now that you...
But we want to give people the sense of, like, I'm in, I'm in my neighborhood, let's say I haven't been following Falcone at all, but I can punch in and say, oh, here we are roughly. So, if I go to the meeting on Thursday night, I'm not going to be talking about traffic if that's already been resolved. I mean, that's not a good example because that's never resolved, but you, you see my point.
But the Boston one too, you can, you can submit your comments online.
Boston one's great.
So, like if, instead of setting a separate letter or an email, you just type it into their portal there and then those all get accumulated and they get sent to the applicant and then, and sent to the project manager at the BPDA. And then their expectation of the applicant is to respond to the comments that were received. So, it does that, I'm sure their particular one was, is more complete, or more extensive than we would need, but the tools are available as like, is my point, right?[1583.33]